If we would all rise and pay attention to Councilman Mays as we prepare for the invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to invite Major Josh Buford from the 190th Kansas Air National Guard to give the invocation.
Please join me in the invocation. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for our gathering here this evening and for the opportunity to recognize our Topeka Armed Forces Personnel of the Year. We thank you for the sacrifice, dedication, and contributions of each of these members, and for the positive example they have set for us all and our organizations. We are grateful that you have made us in your image, that we may accomplish great and meaningful things. It's in your name that I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now proceed to the Proclamations, and we have a very special event for us tonight, so if you'll give me a second to go around. So as City Manager comes, it is my honor to invite our City Manager to be here. He is also a service member, so I thought it would be wonderful to include him in this celebration. We are here tonight to celebrate our heroes, and it is a great delight that every single year, the city of Topeka has made a commitment to celebrate the service members of the year. You're going to hear a little bit about their stories, you are going to learn a little bit about their community engagement, and the beauty of this is that they're so selfless that it's not just that they're putting their lives on the line for our country, but when they're home, when they're inland, they're also serving in our communities, and I think a lot of people forget that. In addition to that, before we get started, I would like for everybody to please give a round of applause for the families who support these men and women that serve our country. Would you like to say anything before we start?
You're doing a good job.
So the process will be pretty simple. I will be saying a little bit of information of the individual that we're recognizing. We're going to get the plaque, and you will proceed over to the City Manager. We have a little token of our appreciation is a medal that hopefully resembles the honor that we have of having you in our communities and to serve our country. So the first person up is Master Sergeant Willie F. Carter. Master Sergeant Willie F. Carter graduated from North Lenore High School in La Grange, North Carolina. He joined the Army in 1981 and attended basic training in January 1982. Carter helps mentor kids through his involvement in local Topeka sports activities, teaching kids how sports will help them with everyday life problems. He's been coaching and refereeing for over 25 years in Topeka and the surrounding area. What impressed me a lot was the fact that he works along the side of his wife, Jolynn, where they sponsor family and marriage encounter workshops for over 15 years. So please, help me recognize Master Sergeant Willie Carter. Hospital Corpseman First Class Jamie Tuttle enlisted into the U.S. Navy on March 21st, 2000. Tuttle's assignments have spanned from Bremington, Washington, to Rock Island, Illinois. In 2013, she was assigned to site support in Topeka and assumed duties as the Senior Medical Department Representative for the Detachment. She was also designated the Collateral Duties of Uniformed Victim Advocate, Toys for Tots Coordinator, HITT Level One Instructor, and Combat Lifesaver Instructor. During her 17 years in the Navy, Tuttle has served her community in many different capacities. From October 2014 to December 2017, Tuttle devoted more than 800 hours with the Marine Corps Reserve Toys for Tots Program, indirectly responsible for the program ensuring over 35,000 toys were collected, sorted, and distributed to over 15,000 children. The next person to be recognized is Staff Sergeant Anthony Miller with the United States Marine Corps. Staff Sergeant Anthony Miller enlisted into the United States Marine Corps on September 13th of 2004. Miller's assignments have included the Second Ammunition Company Camp Lejeune, North Carolina, Marine Corps Security Forces Training Company Chesapeake, Virginia, First Ammunition Company Camp Pendleton, California, and Weapons Training Battalion in Quantico, Virginia. Miller has served his community in many different capacities throughout the years. From July to December 2017, Miller devoted more than 250 hours as a youth basketball coach for the Topeka Shockers in the Kenberry League, and as a youth basketball coach for the Little Hurricanes and Hornets in upward sports. He assisted with the Toys for Tots Program, ensuring over 35,000 toys were collected, sorted, and distributed for over 15,000 children. He also volunteers as a guest speaker for the Indian Hills Elementary School Veterans Day Assembly. So I know that I speak more than one language and have an accent, so bear with me when I already asked how to say this title, but the next person to be recognized is Yeoman Third Class Chloe Boatman. Petty Officer Chloe L. Boatman grew up in Shurts, Texas, and enlisted in the Coast Guard in 2012. After completing basing training in Cape May, New Jersey, she began her career at the U.S. Coast Guard and aids navigation team in Morgan City, Louisiana. Boatman's military awards include Commandment Letter of Commendation Ribbon, Coast Guard Meritorious Unit Commendation Ribbon, Coast Guard Meritorious Team Commendation Ribbon, National Defense Service Medal, and the Coast Guard Good Conduct Medal. Boatman volunteers in many Topeka community initiatives, including the Partnership and Education Program at Lomen Hill Elementary School, where she tutors kindergarten students each week. Boatman also volunteers her time for Meals on Wheels and Harvesters. Her selfless commitment to her community has had a positive and lasting effect on the quality of many Topeka residents. Thank you. Last and certainly not least, to be recognized is Chief Master Sergeant Troy C. Abel from the Kansas Air National Guard. Chief Master Sergeant Troy C. Abel is the Drill Status Superintendent of the 190th Mission Support Group, the 190th Air Refueling Wing at Forbes National Air Guard Base in Topeka. As a member of the group's command staff, he provides leadership and management and organizing training and equipping assigned personnel with the mission support group to support mission requirements. Abel regularly volunteers his time to support residents of Topeka and the surrounding communities. During military holidays, he travels to local schools, participating in school assemblies. He is also passionate about recognizing local veterans, volunteering to speak, and present awards to veterans in nursing homes. Abel is also a spokesperson for the Kansas Air National Guard through the local veteran service groups. He has been the keynote speaker at the Great Oval and Station Veterans Day Celebration, guest speaker at the 2017 Perry LaCompton Middle School Veterans Day Celebration, and participated in the dedication ceremony of the Perry Post Office Military Mural. So standing in his place today, since he is in Washington, D.C. with his immediate supervisor, we have Colonel Jared France, the Commander of the 190th Refueling Wing. Thank you. If we could all just give a round of applause to all of these families and our service individuals who have done so much for our country. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body, tonight is another Step Four in our process related to our budget. Tonight, we have a series of presentations, Public Works Fourth Quarter Report, Utilities Fourth Quarter Report. Each of those will look at the projects that we've worked on this year and projects that are upcoming. Over the next three weeks, we'll have discussions regarding our capital improvement plan, our 2019 to 2028 plan. The proposed book will be made public next week, which will include details of the capital improvement budget and the various components of projects that we plan to do. We'll continue to look for new ways to present the CIP to you as a governing body. Tonight, we will look back at current and completed CIP projects with Public Works and Utilities. The next two weeks, we will look specifically at projects in the proposed budget. We look forward to the discussion and stand ready to answer questions at the end of the presentations. The next critical moment is for us is March 14th. We will have a Budget Open House at the Topeka Shawnee County Library from 5:30 to 7:00. It'll be a chance for the public to interact with city officials and ask questions and provide their input on the priorities for the budget, so we welcome any and all that would be interested in participating. With that, there is Jason Peak, and he'll start with covering the Public Works projects. Jason?
Good evening, governing body. This is a great time of year. We're going to, as City Manager said, take a look back at what we did in 2017 and also kind of give a preview of what's coming in 2018. Despite the weather day, we know spring's around the corner because we've seen the orange traffic cones already starting to bloom around Topeka. We came to you last year and talked about all the major street projects that were completed in 2017, and in total, there were over, there were 19 street projects. These covered everything from some of our major arterial corridors like Southwest 21st Street, Southwest Topeka Boulevard, but even in our neighborhoods, so Southwest Clay, Southeast Golf Park were some of the street projects we did last year. This is just kind of continuation of all those projects. You know, Southwest 10th Avenue between Gage Boulevard and Fairlawn there, south of the zoo, I think was a really nice change. That was a rural ditch section road we took to a three-lane road with a multi-use path out there. Southeast California and southeast part of town. I know there was a lot of gnashing of teeth early on when we started that project, but we managed to get it done, and I'm very excited to report those. We do have a few, and as we talked about last time, that will be restarting this year. This list, of course, is a lot less than what we've had in previous years, but Southwest Wanamaker and 10th Street intersection, if you recall, we were working the different quadrants of that intersection. I got into colder weather and needed to shut that down. We shut that down and are restarting, basically replacing the intersection there. Southwest 6th Street between Gage and Fairlawn, we have the piece of base paving there that we'll continue to work on, as well as the western section of that. We're turning that into a three-lane roadway through there. These other two, I think, are kind of symptomatic of some of the things we find when we get into projects. North Kansas Avenue, we had a storm sewer underneath that roadway that was in very poor condition and wasn't identified until we started construction, and so that one will be restarting in early April. And then southwest 21st Street out there by the mall was another one that, once we got in there with the paving, we realized there was a storm culvert underneath the roadway that needed to be replaced. In the timing of that project, we needed to get the road open for the commercial shopping season, so we did that, and we're going to have to come back this spring and fix that underground infrastructure. Looking ahead, we'll be continuing with a lot of work. We've got 12 major street projects planned, and what I want you to see on this list is kind of the big dates and just our continued effort to get more of these projects bid in a timely manner. If we look all the way back to 2016, we had bid dates going into June, July, and August, and now you see that the majority of our projects kind of have that early spring date. That allows the contractors to have a lot more construction season. Some things I want to highlight on this is we have a couple of intersection projects, Southwest 29th and Burlingame. We had over 150 people at that public meeting come out to talk about that project. That's going to require a lot of phasing, and we'll keep that intersection open, but conversely, Southwest 21st and Kansas Avenue, we're putting that on a really tight timeframe, and we'll be shutting down that intersection in the summer to complete that construction, basically from the time school closes and have it open before school opens again in the fall. Pavement maintenance or preventative maintenance program, we've been doing a lot of crack sealing throughout the neighborhood or throughout the city. You should have noticed there's a lot of what we call the, people call them tar snakes or black squiggly lines, but basically crack seal and pavement, very important. That's going to be followed by a full-width surface sealing program. This is going to address about 75 miles of streets in this year within that one program, and that, of course, is being paid for by the excess countywide sales tax. We have a number of our traditional kind of neighborhood reconstruction projects, as well as arterials and collectors. So a lot of good work going on. We also have a lot of traffic signal projects occurring in 2018. We've got nine, basically, major signal projects. Some of these are just our standard replacement as we work through in the CIP, replacing traffic signals, and the ones with asterisks you can see are, these are included in bid with a roadway project, so they're packaged together. We also have a new signal that will be going on our bid in April 19th, and that's at Southwest Fairlawn and the eastbound I-470 ramp, so kind of at the Toyota dealership there. And part of that project, it's been in the works, basically to help with some of the congestion at 29th and Fairlawn, so that we have that in place prior to the Wheatfield Village development going on there. So that's some of the highlights of streets and traffic projects, and then I thought I'd share some photos with you, some of the things we don't talk a lot about as part of our CIP updates, but equally important. So we, in engineering, I work with planning and neighborhood relations to implement the SORT projects or the neighborhood projects. This past year, we completed a lot of sidewalk work in north Topeka and Oakland. Here's a view of a new sidewalk there at Quincy Street, south of Quincy Elementary. So these projects really do have a major impact on those neighborhoods and are a lot of fun to work on. We do alley projects as well as part of the SORT, and you kind of have a before and after here of an old gravel alley that was turned into a new concrete alley. These projects have to be done in conjunction with our utilities because we do need to think about the underground sewer infrastructure and other infrastructure that's there. Just as an FYI, our engineering staff is also looking at alternative approaches to alleys so we can spread those dollars more, and that basically means are we looking at maybe replacing the driveway approaches to alleys and keeping aggregate surface in there that's beefed up to handle the traffic from trash trucks. We also implement the bikeways projects. Planning does the bikeways master plan, and then we work to kind of get that down. A lot of the early bikeways projects were the sharrows, those arrows on the road that are shared the road with cyclists. This year actually included some of our first bike lane projects, where we're actually putting designated facilities for bikes. This is looking at Troy Street west of Topeka Boulevard, and so we'll continue to implement those. And then lastly, I just wanted to highlight, this is an active bridge project that's going on in the 1800 block of southwest Cherokee. This was a bridge actually built in 1900 over Ward Creek. It was refurbished in 1930, and here we are in 2018, actually replacing that. So a very old structure that's kind of served its useful life, and we're using some of the federal fund exchange dollars to actually conduct this bridge project. So good things happening in Public Works, and then just, this is the financial summary on the street projects only for 2017, so just looking at how well we did as far as getting expensed and committed the dollars that you gave us for budget, and so we had about $83,000 that were uncommitted at the end of 2017 within our projects. And with that, I would stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Peak. Do we have any questions?
All right. Well, continuing along, Braxton Koffler, Deputy Director for Utilities, is going to come up and share with you CIP information for the Utilities Department.
Council.
Good evening.
It's always a pleasure to talk about our exciting Utilities projects, and my goal is always to educate and if I can entertain a little bit, try that as well. I have some great projects for you. Under construction, we have a couple of different projects. West Intake Meere Vault was just approved by Department of Agriculture, Division of Water Resources, so we now have that going. For those of you that were on the CIP bus tour on what was probably the coldest day of the winter, you probably recognize this building, which is the brand-new building that we have out at the water treatment plant, and this houses our East High Service Pump Station. When it was originally constructed back in the late '60s, it wasn't really a pump station with nothing like this because the pumps sat outside on the ground, so they were pretty much inoperable during the winter. Fortunately, East High Service provides our backup pumping to the lane station, so we really don't need those in the winter because our demand drops off so much. But if we were to lose lane, then we wouldn't have anything to provide a service, so that's why it's critical to get those pumps inside the building. In addition, we're replacing our SCADA and our motor control as part of this project. And as always, our projects are pushed out and updated daily on the city's portal, and you can see on East High Service, we're on budget, $2.7 million budget. Construction is due to conclude at the end of May, and right now, we are ahead of schedule. We're looking at possibly mid-April to have this completely locked up and have everything We have a couple of water projects in design. I'll just touch on a couple of these, the Kansas River weir improvements. We just received from our consultant the 90% plans, so once we get those done, then we'll push them out to bid. Unfortunately, we're coming up to the chub spawning season, so from April to August, you can't do any construction in the Kansas River. We had already planned for that. We wanted to get the bid documents out early, and this way I'll give the contractor time to stage and plan because most of this work will need to be done during the winter when we have our traditionally low flows in the Kansas River. Calde Creek, really exciting project. This is a very high break area. In the 3,200 lineal feet, we're looking at doing, we've had 55 breaks in the last 10 years. On this one, we are just going out to bid this week, and we're going to bid this pipe bursting. It'll be our first major pipe bursting project, and we're going to also alternate bid for boring to see how we get the best bids in. Wastewater projects. You've heard the old adage about the sinkholes. Well, the alley between Van Buren and Jackson, just north of 5th Street, we had a call in that we had a void in one of our alleys. To put it mildly, yes, that, just to put this in perspective, those are, that is a 36-inch, 100-plus-year-old sewer line that is stacked brick. Once we encountered that initial void, and then we discovered two or three other significant voids, and so you can see at the end of the day, after we got all the excavation done, we had no problem meeting OSHA's sloping requirements. This one is, we're going to actually put a manhole, a doghouse manhole over the biggest part of the void. We're going to be adding some CMP to, for the structural integrity where we lost the shoulder, and then after we get this all sealed up, get it graded, get the pavement restored, which is scheduled for the end of March, we'll come back in a second phase, and we're actually going to line several hundred feet of this line. We televise the entire line, and we had a couple of areas where we were starting to lose brick, starting to fail, so we're going to come in and add structural integrity by lining this entire line, do several hundred feet of it. And again, our port shot, and budget on this estimated at $175,000 and hope to have it done by the end of March. A couple of wastewater projects in design. One of these is adding a scale out of the Oakland wastewater treatment plant to be able to more accurately weigh and bill for the waste that comes in. You see the north-south street there, that's Poplar. The scales are going to be just north of our main entrance, just off on the right-hand side there, so allow a truck to come in, scale, and then they can do a loop, and then come back down south off of Poplar. We're looking at a total budget of this of $450,000. Initially, we had planned to do this project over the winter, but we had some major work on our digesters, so we intentionally pushed back the start of this contract because we didn't want them interfering with the digester work. Digestors are right next to where the scale is going to be. We're going to be, it's, bid's been awarded, we're negotiating the contract, hope to get started in April, and then we have a 90-day construction period on this project. Stormwater. Now, you remember the last time I was here, I talked about the DCP program, which is the Drainage Correction Program. So I want to talk about another DCP project, and this is on Chelsea, right by the McClure Middle School. And after the school constructed their gymnasium slash tornado shelter and added some additional parking there, we had complaints from the four properties along Chelsea that they were experiencing a much heavier rain runoff than they had in the past because of that impervious surface. And so we've worked with our consultant and 501, and where you see that orange line going down, that's actually going to be a new swale and berm, and that's going to direct water down to that very southeast corner. That red dot down there is going to be a structure with an inlet, and what that'll do is meter flow out through a 15-inch pipe, high-density polyethylene, HDPE pipe, down to the street, or just short of the street, and then we'll take it in and feed it into a 24-inch that we have just down there at 27th Street. And then you see those little orange squiggly lines are going to be some additional swale and berm to basically direct any additional water that's sheet-flowing down between the houses and through a swale so it doesn't go into the houses. The neighbors, I was out there on site with them earlier this spring and explained the project to them, and they're very, very happy that they qualified under that DCP program, That one is currently in design. We're waiting on the gas company to move the line because it was exactly where we needed to put, of course, our storm line. And expect to have this one done this construction season by the end of August. With that, just our summary, $51.7 million of projects. So far, we have about 17 encumbered and spent, $34 million. Uh, so far, we have about seventeen encumbered and spent, thirty-four million remaining. That's, and the large remaining amount is because we have some programs that we haven't yet started on, the seventeen, and we have a couple of big-ticket wastewater, uh, items like our, um, solids handling methane project, uh, that we haven't yet, uh, commenced because the, uh, design is so intensive on that. So with that, I will gladly stand for any questions that you have on any of our utilities projects.
Councilwoman Clear.
With this twenty-first, or twenty-sixth and Chelsea, is it normal that we didn't know this was going to happen? Or, or do you kind of know this is gonna happen when the first project was done?
The, actually, uh, as part of the, uh, review that comes in through the planning department, we take a look at it and this one showed that there was not going to be any, uh, land disturbance activity of greater than an acre, so that didn't automatically kick in our BMPs. Further, it showed that the impervious surface was approximately the same because there was some older parking lot there where they constructed this. So that's, that's why there were no, um, provisions that were required at the time of the permit approval. Obviously, after it had been constructed, neighbors did complain about it. That's when we came in under the DCP project to correct this.
So there's nothing that warned you first, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Braxton, let's go back to Fifth and Van Buren, the sanitary service repair. You talked about, um, how you guys were going to cover it, is that correct?
Where the biggest part of the void is, we're going to actually take a doghouse manhole, concrete manhole cover and set that down over where the big hole is.
Mm-huh.
But that's not gonna cover all of it and so what we're gonna do is take a piece of, uh, corrugated metal pipe, cut it in half and then take the top part and put that over the top of it, so that will form a shoulder. Then we'll come in and grout inside that CMP so that we're at the same thickness as the brick. So that will give us enough structural integrity and then phase two of it will be to come in with the cast-in-place lining that will then go ahead and line that entire pipe.
Okay, and that was my concern, like, what if another part of the pipe breaks?
Correct, and, and we're very concerned about that because once you lose the shoulder, that old brick pipe can start to unwrap.
Right.
And so there was a lot of thought, and we actually had this designed out with our consulting engineer to come up with what is the best possible solution to this.
And that will go all the way down the alley to the north or to the south?
This, right, it runs both ways. That thirty-six inch line runs, um, honestly, I just took a look at the GIS, but it runs a significant, uh, stretch down, I think, almost to first.
So will we do both sides, the north and the south?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and how old did you?
We'll line.
I'm sorry?
We will line that entire, entire section, it'll be several hundred feet that we will line.
Okay, and how old did you say that piping was? I thought you mentioned how old it was.
Oh, it's, it's over a hundred years old.
Over a hundred. This is outside my work window. This is what I look at every day, so that's why. And, and a lot of people ask me and I'm like, I don't know, I just know we need solid on the streets because it's, it's ice ring out there and the city manager has done a good job of getting our crews out there, um, because we were sliding out of the garage, but, so I wanna be able to take this tomorrow and show them so they, they think I know what I'm talking about. Thank you, Braxton.
Councilman Emerson.
Mr. Copley, first of all, thank you for the report. I did have a follow-up question, uh, to Mrs. Clear's question. On twenty-sixth and Chelsea, uh, since it was caused then by the school district, will they be participating in the cost of construction?
Um, no, they're not gonna be participating in the cost, cost of construction. However, they are donating the easement, uh, in no charge to us and they're allowing us to construct the improvements of the swale and berm to collect that water on their property to meter out through that structure. And again, as I had indicated, when the initial plan came through, it was under an acre of the land disturbance, so it didn't automatically kick in the BMPs and that the, there was no difference in the impervious surface between what was there and what was, uh, designed.
See, do they pay the stormwater tax like, uh, private citizens do in businesses?
Uh, yes, they do.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other, Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you. If we could go back to the, um, well, it's page eleven on the printout, but the, the, the worksheet, the, the display from the, um, from the city's, um, website on the Oakland wastewater treatment plant, scales the, the sheet?
Yes.
Um, it's, it's been a while since I tried to check one, but I remem, and, and really a couple of years when this program was new, but I had bought it the time it was out of date and, and you said that these are current, so could you help me understand what to expect? Um, because this one says that it's on track and that the project end date is December of twenty seventeen, so what should a person expect in terms of the updates? Because you said this one is actually, hasn't even started yet.
Correct.
So, just help me understand what your system is. So it's, it says on track even if it's running late and we know it?
I, I honestly can't, uh, yeah, I, I, I honestly don't know. I'm guessing that it's pulling from Eclipse, so that's probably an error on my staff's fault, that we did not change the on-track designation on there to show that as, as yellow, meaning, uh, a warning because we did intentionally delay the start of this project.
Yeah, I'm fine with the, with the choices, it was just what to expect in reading the...
Yes, so that, that, that is something that I will follow up on, that we should have updated the status on that to indicate yellow for, uh, a warning on there for that being on track.
And so just normally then, had you switched it to yellow, um, would it still say December twenty seventeen, the original date, or would you change the date?
No, we shouldn't. We should have changed the project end date to reflect what our estimate is, which will be, if we start in April, it would be end of June, first of July.
And, and is there a way in this system, I mean, this is a good example where it would, it would still show what the original dates were, so somebody who was looking at it, who thought, let's say it was supposed to be done and it's not and they look at it, would it reflect? I don't see a note string or anything, so I, this is really just a question on how to read it.
And I, I can't answer that question because what I would do is enter my information into the Eclipse project management software, so I'm not sure what gets pushed from Eclipse out to the project portal and then the financial information gets pushed out daily from our loss and financial system to the portal.
Okay. I mean, it's not uncommon for one to get delayed for some reason or another, so...
Though, correct, and, and we, um, I apologize, we should have done a better job of updating that in Eclipse to reflect what our intentional actions were.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Lesser.
I wanted to follow back up on Councilman Emerson's question. Had, had we known the, um, during the process of, of the planning on this, had we known, um, on the twenty-sixth and Chelsea, had we known that the water was gonna run off that way during the process, would there have been, um, some different requirements that would have been made of the school district in that case?
Correct, on, and we've spent a great deal of our time collectively in terms of working with planning to look at projects that are going to have potential impact because they're adding impervious surface. So a good example would be if we have more than an acre of land disturbance activity. The developer's going to be required to provide onsite detention as well as water quality features, whether it's rain, rain garden, uh, filtration, um, an ADS system, basically a, a system to capture the rainwater and to collect sedimentation. But again, on this one, because of the fact that it was under an acre and the impervious surface did not appear to be any greater, there were no requirements put on this, on the school district to add either water quantity or quality for that development. But that's a really good question, yes, it's something we take very seriously in terms of review and we hear, um, we hear about it from the developers because they, uh, don't like to have to comply with our requirements for quantity and quality.
So the answer to the question is, had we known that was gonna happen, they would have participated with the project basically that we have right now?
Or we would have required them to detain onsite from that additional impervious surface.
So the, I guess then that comes back to my question. I don't understand just because it's after the fact and this is a result of, why they wouldn't participate? That's, I'm not understanding.
And...
Why we wouldn't do that.
And I, I guess the, the simplest answer is, when they submitted the plans, it did not appear that there was going to be any greater impervious, or any greater impervious surface causing runoff, so we didn't have that expectation. Now, what I don't know is if, two years ago, we had the same issue that the, uh, where we had smaller rainfalls, that it wasn't as impairant, maybe it was the construction activity that the property owners identified, so I, I don't have a way to be able to quantitatively prove what was, what was the cause.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions for Mr. Copley? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, and with that, I will, uh, turn it over to Mr. Sample, the director of utilities, who will do a update on the water treatment.
Okay. Okay, good evening, everybody. Um, well, I'm here tonight to talk with you about the city of Topeka's water quality. So as you know, we went out of compliance for halocetic acids and one of the eight sites that we sample for. Halocetic acids is regulated by EPA and the maximum contaminant level for halocetic acids is sixty micrograms per liter. So in February, we received results showing sixty point six micrograms per liter at that one site. So we went over the limit by point six micrograms per liter, or in other words, six tenths of a microgram per liter. And to help put that into perspective, the volume of point six micrograms per liter is comparable to less than one-third of a teaspoon in a six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-gallon Olympic-sized swimming pool. This is the first time the city of Topeka's ever been out of compliance with any water A little bit about how some, how halocetic acids. Uh, city of Topeka, like most other cities, use chlorine to disinfect the water. Chlorine is an excellent for killing unwanted bacteria in our, in our water system. Chlorine does, though, react with organics that can be naturally found in river water to form a byproduct called halocetic acids. Again, halocetic acids are regulated by the Environmental Protection Agency. Okay, a little bit about what we're doing to resolve the issue. Uh, we're working with a consultant to implement process changes at the water treatment plant. We are examining the use of powdered activated carbon, referred to as PAC. Powdered activated carbon is, is a product that's very dense, very porous, and has ability to absorb large amounts of organics. We're also looking at changes in our polymer. Polymer is a chemical that brings small fine particles and water together, hold them, holds them there like glue so they can be more easily removed. PAC and polymers are being used effectively in other cities to, to lower their halocetic acids. We expect to have, uh, this issue resolved in one hundred and eighty days. I can tell you that this is something we've been working on. Um, you will see in the proposed CIP that we have two point two million dollars budgeted in two thousand and nineteen and then we also have eighteen million dollars budgeted in years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. And that would be for a more comprehensive improvement of our disinfection system. Lawrence, by the way, is one that's using these, using PAC and polymers to reduce their halocetic acids. Okay, let's talk about, uh, health concerns. First of all, there's no immediate risk, there's no need to seek an alternative water supply. The water is safe and I wanna read this. This comes straight from a public notification letter that was taken from the template provided by KDHE and can also be found on EPA's website. And it says, "People who drink water containing HAAAs, or halocetic acids, in excess of the maximum contaminant level over many years may have an increased risk of getting cancer." Again, this is the first time we've been out of compliance. "If you have any specific health concerns, please consult your doctor." So just to summarize, we went out of compliance for halocetic acids out of the one, out of one site out of the eight sites that we sample. We're working with a consultant to have the issue resolved within a hundred and eighty days. No immediate risk and the water is safe, no need to find an alternative water source. So with that, I would open it up for questions.
Councilwoman Clear.
Okay, so I know what happened. How did it happen? Actually, what was there too much or too little? How did it happen?
Again, when we disinfect with chlorine and, again, chlorine is an excellent disinfection, just every city uses chlorine, it will react with organics in the river.
So there was too much organic or too little chlorine? Or you didn't know there was that much organic?
No, no, the, the organics dictates, usually dictates the results of the, of the testing. So we have no control over the organics in the river, they will, they will go up and they will come down. So, uh, the chlorine reacts with that, again, chlorine does a great job, but it, it produces this byproduct that's regulated by EPA.
Okay.
Halocetic acids.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Sample?
Thank you, and, and just, I wanted to mention that in the Capitol Journal, the day after we made our announcement, there was a letter to the editor saying how much they appreciated the, the great work that the city did and making sure that we were on top of this and that we were, um, so concerned in the way they were handling the situation. So my appreciation, not only to Mr. Sample, but for Molly, who also helped organize all the information going out.
Thank you.
Before we proceed with the roll call, I am going to announce that Council, that Deputy Mayor Jensen was, uh, stuck in traffic returning back from his trip. Um, he should be with us next week. We now proceed with the roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Clear?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Benson?
Mayes?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
And Lesser?
Here.
At this point now, we proceed with the consent agenda if the clerk would read.
Items A through E are resolutions introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller approving special events at various locations, including Country and Food Truck Festival, Jazz and Food Truck Festival, Rock and Food Truck Festival, Tap That Topeka, and Tacos and Tequila. F is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sandra Clear approving a special event known as a classic movies night in Noto. Items G through L are resolutions introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting greater Topeka partnership and exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code, Section nine forty-five one fifty at seat concerning noise prohibitions for various events, including Country and Food Truck Festival, Jazz and Food Truck Festival, Rock and Food Truck Festival, Tap That Topeka, Tacos and Tequila, and Family and Food Truck Festival. M is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sylvia Ortiz granting Randy Wheat an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code, Section nine forty-five one fifty at seat concerning noise prohibitions. N is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of December thirty, twenty seventeen, through February two, twenty eighteen, and enumerating said expenditures therein. O are minutes of the regular meeting of February twenty, twenty eighteen. There's a list of open after midnight applications in front of you for consideration and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you very much. For anybody that thinks that there's nothing going on in Topeka, reach out to Councilwoman Hiller. At this time, what is the, what is the, and Councilwoman Ortiz, absolutely, what is the pleasure of the body?
I'll move to her.
Do we have a second? Councilman Emerson, seconds. Uh, we now proceed, um, with the, with the vote. vote. That doesn't work here.
Ms. Clear. We have nine yess.
Nine having voted yes, the consent agenda passes unanimously. At this point in time, we move forward with the action items and the agenda. If the clerk would read.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout concerning fireworks, amending City of Topeka Code Section 835-070 and repealing original section.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. In our continued effort to work towards a resolution that we can, as a council, the governing body could consider, we propose some amendments to what was presented at the last meeting, and I'll let Deputy City Manager Gerber discuss them.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Trout, thank you. As, as was noted by the City Manager, and just like we discussed last time, the ordinance in front of you for action tonight contains what we think are points of agreement from the body. So I, I thought first I would run through those specifically, the changes that have taken place, beginning with the fact that this ordinance, if adopted this evening, would become effective July 5, 2018, so after the Fourth of July this year. There was a suggestion at the meeting, which seemed to have general agreement last time, that we could make some small tweaks this year and then, but make them effective after the firework season this year. So that's incorporated in, into them. Another change is reducing the time period for fireworks sales from the current period of July, or June 27 through the July 5, to June 27 through July 4. So taking off one day on the back end of the fireworks sales. Reduce the time period for discharge. The current period allows July 1 through the 3, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., July 4, 8:00 a.m. to midnight, and that would be changed to allow them to be shot off July 1 through the 4, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. The third change is prohibit the discharge of fireworks if the sound level exceeds 120 decibels. There was some discussion about that. As has been noted, that is a challenging change to enforce. And certainly, we've done some research on how you would even regulate that. And I think I was quoted as saying it's a challenge, and it is. Fireworks don't come with decibel levels on the packaging, and certainly, our police department isn't equipped to go out and look with their decibel meter at every complaint they get. So that one is a challenge, but we did hear some, we thought we heard some interest in that. So that is also contained in the ordinance. The fourth change increases the permit fee from $280 to $500. And finally, the fifth change prohibits the discharge of fireworks within 500 feet of a hospital. So that's a summary of the six items of interest in this ordinance. Everything else remains the same. I would suggest, like I did last time, that staff is not married to any of these ideas. We understand there's differing opinions. We would suggest that maybe we go through these one at a time so that we don't get lost in the details of one change to another. So if someone has potential amendments that they would like to do or changes, that we consider them one at a time within the scope of the overall ordinance. And with that, I'd stand for questions.
Thank you. If the body would be amenable to this, we have one person signed up for public comment. So before we go into discussion, if the body would be okay us calling the person signed up for speaking, and that would be Teresa Miller.
Good evening, everyone. I feel really passionate about this. Don't get me wrong, I love the Fourth of July. But however you call it, Fourth of July or Independence Day is one day. We get four, but now, I was excited when you guys struck it from the first to the fourth. I was, yay, we finally decided it could just be four days. Narrow back to the 27th of selling this product. I got this for you. Most families budget their money, and that type of holiday you have to budget for, most families. I know, my grandchildren lived with me. I gave them $100, and I told them, this is all, each one of you, just spend $100 out of your money. That's all you get. Once in a while, they give me the puppy dog eyes, and they got more. But for four days, they could go back and keep buying more for four days, and they would spend the exact same amount of money as if we had the eight days you're giving these people to sell. It's just like, I'm a chocoholic, okay? That's like me buying a piece of cake, chocolate cake, yummy chocolate cake, sticking it in the refrigerator, and telling myself, I can't touch that for four days. Do you think I'm going to hold out for four days? No, I'm not. And anybody that buys fireworks will not hold out, and I'm topping the deal. Most of these people that buy these fireworks and have to store them for four days, how dangerous is that? Especially if you buy the big fireworks. They don't know how properly to store these things. They can cause house fires, garage fires, you name it. So truthfully, for safety reasons, and for those people out there that really don't understand how dangerous they are, selling them ahead of time and storing them for four days is really dangerous. For the other people, four days is a lot to fire fireworks. I get that. And I know everybody loves the Fourth of July. And I can live with the four days. But I feel sorry for the people with PTSD, the animals, and mental people that have to deal with it for four days. Like I say, it's a one-day holiday. We don't sell any other holiday for, we don't sell Christmas for four days. We don't celebrate all these things for four days. This is the one holiday they do. I get that. But I wish you would take in consideration of the sales. The people will, they, they will have the same amount of money for four, to buy in four days. They will in the eight days and not have to worry about storing it. Because guess what? They could buy it on July 1, and they can fire it right away. They don't have to worry about storing it or it exploding on them, or overheating, or any of that. So you need to understand it's also a safety deal. So I hope you take that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so do we have discussion? Councilwoman Clear.
Okay, round two. My emails and phone calls this last two weeks was like 50/50. Okay, so what I'm hearing, we have pros and we have cons. I think we are going to have to meet in the middle. We're going to have to please all these con people. We're going to have to please the pro people. And the only fair way to do that is get something in the middle. Now, I happened to be at my veterinarians today, and I asked him, I say, give me something about animals. You know, give me, what do you see Fourth of July? He goes, all the, you know, people that have to medicate their dogs. He goes, I've seen a dog that ran straight through a glass door trying to get away from the noise. We knew that. Okay, so then I thought about animals, and I thought, the zoo. What does our zoo do? So I called Brendan, and I said, tell me about our animals on the Fourth of July. And he said, well, here, before his time, there was a zebra that got really spooked and ran straight through the fence and broke his neck. And he said, they, it is a concern. They do lock more animals up that night. And the key point is there, that night, it gets a little more difficult when it's five nights, four nights. And then I thought, okay, now I need to really know about veterans. And so I talked to Dr. Graham at the VA, and she said, the problem is, on the Fourth of July, the combat vets know there's going to be fireworks. It's the days that before and after the Fourth where they don't know when it's going to happen, and they can't prepare for it. So on the first, at noon, 10,000 people shoot something off that, that startles them because they don't know someone's going to shoot it off at, at noon on the first, you know? So they prepare. She said they start preparing in June for July 4. They prepare the vets to deal with July 4. But they can't prepare them to deal with whoever shoots them off on the 3rd, the 2nd, the 5th. And it's really hard for them to deal with that. So my proposal is, and I'm in agreement with Teresa, the Fourth of July is the Fourth of July. We do not need to make it five days and have five days of the animals suffering and five days of the people suffering. And, and we've got to meet in the middle. We have got to, we can't go just one way or the other. So I would propose just shooting them off two days, because I know I'm not going to get the one day. So I would go with the two days, and even, you know, 10 to 11. I'm not too worried about the cells unless there's some proof that people, you know, really start, well, I could say they start shooting them off as soon as they get them, and I think someone else did. Because when Emerson shoots his off, when he gets them. So we do need to shorten that. But I think it's really wrong of us just because we like the Fourth, and it's a great community involvement, and everybody has fun. It's wrong of us just to look at the pros and ignore these people over here that do have issues with the Fourth. Thank you.
So Councilwoman Clear, and to the team, I think that at this point in time, it'd be wise if we start going one by one of the areas that we were talking about amending. Is that, is that where the body would like to go? I know that we have another council member with some proposals as well. So I would just like to go ahead and, and if, if we could start by staff telling us which is the first line that we were going to start working on amending, and then we could see if there is a motion in a second, and we will proceed that way until we get that. Yes, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think what I heard from my colleague is she wanted two days. I think it would be nice to vote that up or down. And then if there's anybody else that wanted one day or whatever, I think, these I would like to do separately, but I think if we could vote that up or down, that'd get it out of the way. So, I mean, maybe we all agree on two days. I don't, I don't know. But I'm just saying, that way we would move forward.
Councilwoman Clear, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes. I would move. It would be.
Councilmember.
What?
Hold on a minute. Councilwoman Clear, I think we need a main motion to talk about the, the revisions that are proposed in the 222 draft. And then from there, we can go through each of the motions that the Councilmember Clear others may have.
So do we have an initial motion to start opening up the discussion about, Councilwoman Clear makes a motion? We have a second, and Councilwoman Lesser, everybody, if there's no discussion, if we could proceed with the vote? Could you please read? It's the. The motion was to. Approve what was presented to us.
222.
So that then we can start going line item by line item.
Yes.
22nd version.
Thank you, ma'am. So we could proceed to additional discussion? Additional discussion? We could proceed to the voting?
No.
No, we don't want to vote yet.
We're discussing, sorry. We have a motion in a second. Now we go into discussion. So now we have the First Amendment.
So now I'd amend that motion to read, it would become, oh, this is another one. Okay, so what do we do? Are we doing the effective date? Are we doing the shooting date, discharge dates? What are we doing first?
Oh, the effective date isn't numbered.
I would make it effective this year. I don't know why we're waiting a year. Yep. I'd say this year, July, whatever.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and the first thing that we are considering is the effective date of this policy. So Councilwoman Clear makes a motion that the effective date starts in 2018.
Yes.
With the, pardon me, Mayor. So the, right now, in its lines 141 through 142 on page 7, Section 3, it talks about the effective date the ordinance shall be July 5, 2018. Would you like to make that, yeah, approval upon publication, which would be next Monday? Okay.
Okay, so just again, the motion that we are voting up or down is approval of this, the approval, the effective date of this, which would be based on approval at this point in time.
It's almost half a year.
So we now, if there's no further comment, we proceed. Councilwoman Hiller?
Are you ready for discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'll go first then, I guess. We had some discussion last time, and I know there has been along the way with the various commenters that, that people have already ordered their, their fireworks to sell, and many families have already planned their holiday get-togethers this year, and that to change it after the fact could, could really be problematic. I thought this was up for discussion again, but I also needed to hear what people thought. I guess I don't know how harmful, cost-wise, that would be. I don't know how much harm it would do because we haven't really floated that with the public. At least, I haven't gotten any feedback about it yet. So I'll just throw that out for consideration. It might be, if there is harm to be done, then it might be more fair to wait until the 5th. Of course, I don't know how much we're going to decide to change yet.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I won't support it because I do remember the last time that this was brought up. They do order a year in advance, all of their supplies, and I would hate for anybody to be without any money or whatever. And I think a year gives them ample time to curve around our changes. Thank you.
Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd also just mention that this year, the Fourth is on a Wednesday, and that first allows families who might get together on Sunday, on the 1st, to, to shoot the fireworks. If we make this change and make it active this year, that would, that would hurt a lot of those.
Councilman Mays?
I, I think that before we vote on when we make whatever changes we're making effective, it might be beneficial to know what changes we're making. Because if, and I don't know what the will of the, the governing body's going to be, but if we're going to be significantly cutting things, then, then yes, we'll need to evaluate that. But if we're not going to be changing too much, it, it might be all right to start it next week. You know, I mean, I think perhaps the effective date should be one of the later amendments instead of the first. Thank you.
Councilman Lesser?
I would tend to agree. That was something I was going to bring up as well. I don't know that, I don't not support it or support it, but I think it should be one of the last things we decide based on the impact of the changes we make.
With this consideration, would you like to rescind your motion, or would you like to?
So we're not going through on order? We're not going to go through on order now?
The consideration that has been presented to us is that since we don't know what are all.
So we're going to start with number two?
If you would be amicable to rescind the motion, or if you would like the motion to pursue?
No. Yes.
So you're rescinding your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Better make the next one.
All right. So if we, so that we could go in order, could we please have then legal go through each of the items that were changed, that we were going in order, and we could open it up for discussion, if everybody would be amicable to that?
And we'll just consider this first one, number six?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so the first revision that was being proposed was discharge dates and times. So as the ordinance is currently written, on July 1, 2nd, and 3, you can discharge fireworks between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., and on July 4, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 11:59. And the proposed change would allow 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, 8:00 a.m. through 11:00 a.m., or 11:00 p.m. So it's easier, 8 till 11, I guess, on all four days.
Anybody, Councilwoman Hiller?
I, all due respect, I think that's number two, and we needed, we were going to talk about number one. The days first and then the hours?
That was the sale of fireworks.
Okay. Here we go. That, that won't help me. Okay, so the sales of fireworks. Okay, so the sales of fireworks. That would be section D 23 on page 5, line 101. And right now, sales is currently written, they can be sold June 27th through and including July 5th. And as the proposed ordinance states, fireworks could be sold June 27th through and including July 4th.
Okay, so the first item for consideration is the time of sales of the fireworks. Councilwoman Clear, and the dates of the, so that are June 27th through June 4th.
I would amend that to read June 30th to July 4th.
Is there a second? For Council? We have a second. So we have a motion and a second with regards to the dates of the sales of the fireworks to be June 30th through July 4th. Is everybody clear? Do we have any questions or comments? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. I will not support this. I know the county, if we're going to be serious about this, we got to get the county on board, because they're going to go to the county and they're going to bring them back to the city, and that's going to confuse everybody. Because right now, we're in line with the county, and that's why we did this when we set all this up, to try to find a mediocre there, but I can't support that. Because until we get the county on board, you know, they're just going to go right across the street. Where you live at, Mr. Henderson? You're in the county. Oh, you're, oh, well...
No, ma'am.
You got one foot in the county, one foot in the city, you know? And that's what, we really, really, when we thought about this, we really, really didn't want to confuse people, but that, you got to remember, how many of us live across the street from the county? It's just right there. I know, I apologize, Mr. Hendrick, Mr. Henderson, I apologize. But anyway, I can't support that. I understand what you're trying to do, Sandra, and I applaud that, but they're going to bring them right back to the county, right back to the city. Thank you.
Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Like Ms. Ortiz said, out in District 4, right across the street is Jake's Fireworks, probably the only permanent firework stand in the county. And on one side are two city stands, and the other side are three or four county stands, and Jake's. So I agree with Ms. Ortiz that unless we sync up with the county, and I do applaud staff, I know, I understand we did reach out to the county, but, well, Mr. Gerber, if you wouldn't mind expanding on that, please.
Mr. Gerber, Madam Mayor and Councilman Emerson, I did have a conversation with Chair Cook, and his response was he had not heard from any commissioners that had any intention of making any sort of changes to their fireworks laws at this point. So they don't have any, they're not anticipating doing that at this point.
Councilman May?
I'd like to ask the city attorney, is there any reason why we have to have a date certain and we cannot specify perhaps the last Saturday of June?
I don't know that we have to have a date certain. Thank you, good.
The reason that I ask that is because we heard from a couple of people that came and spoke with us that it was very important to their business that they be able to sell it on the Saturday and Sunday prior to the 4th. And I would say the Saturday prior to the 4th, but if it falls on the wrong day, that could only allow them maybe one day to sell, and I don't think that'd be appropriate. So if this amendment doesn't pass, I would probably make another amendment to make it the Saturday before the 4th. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yep.
Councilwoman Heller, and then Councilwoman Clear.
Could someone refresh me, the fire chief talked about how many days they needed to get everybody inspected and get them all settled in when we talked last time. I don't remember how many days.
Chief Duke, can you answer a question regarding how many days regarding inspection, please?
When they apply for permit, you know, they're given time to build their structures and everything. We go out, look at the structures, make sure they're safe, and then also look at what they're selling. And that is from, depending on what day of the week that you're talking about, is usually two days before. We give them two days to put their, after they get their permits, to put their structures up.
Thank you, Chief. Councilwoman Clear?
I agree with you, and that's why I said the 30th, not realizing that may not always follow on that Saturday. Yeah, we've got people that live on the outskirts right by the comb, and we got a whole heck of lot that don't. So, you know, I don't think they're going to go, hey, let's run to the county, buy our fireworks, because we can get them two days earlier. Can't shoot them off yet, but we can get them earlier. I just don't see that happening.
Councilman Lesser?
The only, besides the obvious differences, the only other thing that I would want to point out, too, in regards to this, is the zoo is in the city, Helping Hands is in the city, the VA is in the city, both hospitals are in the city. So I think making a comparison to shooting them off in the county versus what different challenges we have and our citizens have in the city isn't appropriate. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Well, with all due respect, Mr. Lesser, I think it is appropriate. Because before we even had this in place, we had fireworks. I didn't know it was illegal not to shoot them. Because in my district, they shoot them. They go buy them in the county, and they shoot them. And so, you know, I think it's very appropriate that we have that conversation. Because that's why when we started selling, people wanted a piece of the pie, some of these churches in the city of Topeka. I agree with some of the areas around, you know, like maybe the hospital or the zoo, but whatever we do, we've got to make it concrete so that everybody understands it. And before this was even in play, I didn't know it was illegal. I shot it. Because we would go to the county and buy it and come back. Not just me, there's all kind of residents that do that. And so I kind of take offense to that, because, you know, you're going to see, you'll get your calls. As a matter of fact, District 3, call District 9 with all your calls. It's not a very good day for us. We do get a lot of calls. I've heard it all, I've seen it all, but just, I think knocking that out, it's not going to change much. It's really not going to change much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Lesser?
Well, two things. Number one, ignorance of the law does not, does not mean that you don't have to abide the law. And the other, second piece of that is just because we don't feel that we can enforce something, doesn't mean that we don't have law.
Thank you. Councilwoman Heller?
Never mind, I've got to, I'll save it to the next question. Is there, well, back to Councilman May's suggestion, I can't figure out how to phrase it here on the fly, but if we were going to, say, June 30th to July 4, or if a weekend was not included in that time period, starting the Saturday before, is that what you were thinking would be more fair if?
Councilman May?
Sort of. I had been thinking about it, and I had considered that, but I ultimately came to the conclusion that maybe simpler is better for everyone involved to just say the final Saturday of June. But if we can word it properly, and I know, you know, wordsmithing is an art, so if we can come up with something better than I would be welcome, I would welcome that.
Councilwoman Heller?
I think the final Saturday in June could be the 25th and make the season substantially longer, or the 24th, you're right. And I don't know, I, my understanding from the input that we got before was that those early days are typically pretty slow. Everybody's kind of checking their water and their systems, and it gives the police department, or the fire department, time to come and check and then get back with them, if, for them to make changes if they need to. I'm not sure I can figure out how to, not sit in here anyway, how to make it better.
Okay, so, Councilwoman Clear?
What was wrong with the last Saturday of the month?
It might be the 24th.
It could go seven days.
It could be the 24th, because there's 30, that's a week.
Could span a week.
It could make the season 12 days instead of 10.
So the 23th could be the last Saturday of the month with...
June only was 30 days.
That would knock out the...
So at this point, we have a motion and a second, and the motion and a second would be for the sales to go from June 30th to July 4th. Currently, the sales are June 27th through July 4th, to July 5th, and staff has proposed to the 4th. So at this point in time, we're voting up or down? Councilwoman Clear's amendment of June 4th, June 30th to July 4th. And if we're ready, we could go ahead and proceed. Yes, ma'am. June 30th, Councilwoman Clear proposed June 30th to July 4th. Go, and that changes it from June 27th to July 5th, as it stands right now. So it shortens the time of sale.
It looks like on the table is the 30th.
So we're shortening the days from the 27th, from June 27th to July 5th. The proposal of Councilwoman Clear is to go from June 30th to July 4th. Trying to make sure that we're all on the same page, so I'm sorry that I'm repeating myself.
And Mayor, on this matter, it would take five votes to pass, and the mayor won't vote on this because it's a home rule.
It's a home rule, exactly. Mayor doesn't vote. Thank you for that. Okay, so we proceed with the voting.
Motion fails. We have three yes and five voting no. So Clear, May's, and Lesser voted yes.
Okay, at this point in time, then we would have Councilwoman Ortiz?
A motion for staff's recommendation of June 27th through July 4th. So we're just cutting off one day.
Correct. Do we have, we have a second, and Councilman Emerson, any comments or questions before we proceed with voting that up or down? And again, this is simply to go ahead and just adopt the proposal that staff made of changing, just cutting down one day from the 27th to the 4th of July. Okay? Seeing no discussion, we proceed with the voting.
We have four yes and four no, so the motion is rejected.
The motion is rejected. Do we have another proposal from the body? Councilman May?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move that we amend the ordinance to the final Saturday, that fireworks sales can begin the final Saturday of June.
Till what?
Oh, until, until...
Through the 4th or bit?
11 o'clock, July 4th. Well, until July 4th. How about that?
Okay, so Councilman May is making a motion to change the dates to the final Saturday of June through July 4th. Is there a second for that motion? Councilwoman Clear seconds that motion? Councilman Emerson?
Thank you. If I may ask Mr. May's a question, Your Honor?
Absolutely.
First of all, I appreciate that you're thinking on this, and I like making it so every year, we don't have to worry about the calendar or certain dates, but as Ms. Heller pointed out, sometimes that would serve to lengthen the, is there any, would you have room for, you know, either the last Saturday up to so many days, you know, unless that Saturday falls so many days? I don't know, it might start to get too confusing, but again, I could see where this could be, you know, 10-day season some years.
Councilman May?
I would be open to that, yeah. I'm just trying to keep it simple right now. And looking at the calendar, just for argument's sake, this year, it would start on the 29th. Next year, it'd be the 28th. 2020 would be the 26th. So, or actually, I'm sorry, the 27th. So it wouldn't get too early, at least for the foreseeable future. I realize the calendar changes, but I'm looking a couple of years out, and I feel like in, you know, three or four years, if we wanted to revisit it, we could.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clear?
So could we say it can be sold three days prior to July 4th and July 4th?
Are you proposing that as a friendly amendment?
That's kind of what you had.
Be a substitute motion.
Yeah. Councilman Emerson?
Mayor, isn't that what we just voted on, selling?
I think, yes, I think what we're saying.
Hey, let's try it, damn it!
That's very sneaky, I do appreciate that.
Okay, four days and July 4th.
Councilman Lesser, how about if we state they cannot be sold, or they can be sold through the last day of June, provided however that no earlier than June 27th? I mean, some kind of wordsmithing with that respect that kind of, but that's the proposal that we had. Yeah, I mean, it is. So do we want to...
So does the body want to go ahead and vote on this, to see if we could vote it up or down? Councilwoman Clear?
This is seven days. I would like to propose we have less than seven days, even five. So make it 28th, 29th. Don't forget, we have to include all the people.
Councilman May? No further comment?
I would, I'd be happy to just vote on it, and then keep moving.
All right, so the proposal that we have in front of us is final Saturday of June through July 4th.
Okay, motion fails. We have six no.
Six having voting no, the motion fails. Do we have another proposal? Councilwoman Clear?
Five days. So that would be, what is that, 29th?
Five days is what you had before.
No. 30, 31, 2, 3, 4.
And five, and the 4th.
Let's go for four days. Well, what is it now? It's eight, so let's make it six. So let's make it the 29th, June 29th to July 4th.
So we have a motion on the floor to go from sales for June 29th through July 4th. Do we have a motion? We have no such motion?
No.
Yes.
I mean, a second, I'm sorry. Do we have, I'm so sorry. Do we have a second? Okay, so we have June 29th to July 4th. Do we have any discussion? Councilman May?
I'm going to vote for this, because it does, as I said earlier, for the next couple of years, take into account the Saturday and Sunday prior to the 4th, and I think that this might be a good place to start.
Okay. Councilwoman Heller?
A question for the chief again, if I could, and that would be whether, if we do that, since we're not consulting with the vendors first, whether the vendors would be able to set up and get their approvals prior to the 29th.
Chief?
Yes, ma'am, they would. Usually, two days prior, if we change the sales time length, we'll have to start a little bit later, actually. It would help us. So to 29th?
Okay.
We would have the 26th, I'm sorry, 27th... We would have the 26th, oh, sorry, 27th and 28th to inspect the stands. We'll just change our policy.
And that would then reduce the, a little bit, the manpower on the fire department?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Seeing no other hands moving, um, I would propose that we vote this up or down? Okay. So we proceed with the voting?
We have six yes, Ortiz and Cohen voting no.
Okay. So the motion passes, and at this point in time, sales of fireworks will be June 29th through July 4th. If staff could read the second round of amendments.
Okay. I wanted to apologize too, Mayor, because I listed, as the ordinance went through, so I'm sorry I wasn't marrying up with this list that was in the cover sheet. So, um, the second item then would be the discharge of fireworks. And that would be on, um, the first would be on page two, subsection C1, little 1 and little 2. Currently, as written, fireworks can be discharged July 1st, 2nd, and 3rd from 8:00 a.m. through 10:00 p.m. And July 4th, from 8:00 a.m. through 11:59 p.m. And the proposed ordinance stated February 22nd would allow fireworks to be discharged the 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th from 8:00 a.m. through 11:00 p.m.
Okay. So at this time, do we have an amendment? Councilwoman Cleer.
Okay. I'm trying to meet everybody halfway. I'm trying to, trying to make everybody happy. And, but I'm really, after I talked to Dr. Graham, I'm really concerned about our vets. So I would amend to July 4th and 5th from 10 to 11.
No. You didn't really mean that.
No, that's when they sell it. So you make it 3rd and 4th, you mean? Okay. July 3rd and 4th. 10 to 11. Just both days. Don't make any one day longer than the other.
Okay. So Councilwoman Cleer has made a motion?
Because I think then, they know. They have two days they need to prepare for. We know. We have two days. We need to drug our dogs. You know, you don't have the week before, the week, uh, the week after.
Okay. So Councilwoman Cleer's proposal is that discharge will be limited to the 3rd and the 4th of July, 10 to 11. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Councilman Mays seconds. Do we have comments, or would we like to proceed with the voting? Councilwoman Heller.
We have had a number of conferees, even this evening, who have said they would be okay with the way it is now, July 1st to the 4th, as long as there was enforcement. I know that Councilwoman Cleer asked for, um, some further comments from the police chief about whether they could, in fact, upgrade the enforcement. I know I backed that up myself. Could we hear from the chief or a representative about that?
Good evening, Chief.
Enforcement. Evening, Mayor, and Senate managers, uh, everybody. The enforcement would be like normal efforts for any criminal activity that takes place. The call will come in a dispatch. Dispatch would assess it based upon call load and all that. Dispatch to the officers would go out to the scene. If we can determine a violation is taking place, enforcement action will take place. Again, it comes back to what we talked about last week, when we talked about not being present when those violations take place, and then trying to determine who was the violator of the ordinance. And then if we have a witness who can verify who the violator of the ordinance was. If we have an area that we received several calls from, we will try to give that more attention. If manpower allows, call load allows, and those type of actions, then we'll enforce it to the best of our capability.
Councilwoman Cleer.
Very respectfully, because you know I back the TPD. I don't know if that's going to be good enough. Is there a way you can just assign two officers? I mean, I, I've got that, an email that says, so, when he calls in his complaints about fireworks, it went to voicemail. I mean, is there some, you can have two officers just assigned for that?
Well, we, we could look at an overtime status to where officers in overtime would be specifically enforcing those type of ordinances. But, uh, you know, we do not control dispatch. We can contact with them because they are a county entity. But we can have conversation with them to see that they not roll those to voicemail. But I would assume the reason that that is the case is from the 29th through the 5th of July, a lot of those calls come in. And, uh, I would assume that would be why dispatch does that. We can talk with them. And again, like I said, we can do enforcement activities and bring officers on duty on an overtime status because, uh, I would venture to say with staffing the way it is, that we would not be able to place two officers in a no-call status to deal specifically with a fireworks calls.
From my conversations with my constituents, and some that weren't, we've got to get this under control. And one way, one way was the enforcement of the law. Another way is shortening the time. Those are the only two ways that we need to control this out-of-control situation, I guess. So maybe, you know, maybe that would take a year or two. And once we get it under control, you know, and, and get the message across, this is the law, and we are going to enforce it, because now I don't believe anybody believes that.
Well, I agree. The thing that I, that I would like to throw out there, we have worked very diligently over the last several years to include, to improve committee relations with members of our public in the image of the police department. And heavy strict enforcement of fireworks violations, I don't know if that's going to reap the benefits and continue that positive image. So the governing body, I think, would have to take into consideration additional complaints or damaging of the reputation of the police department. Like I said, we can bring officers on an overtime status. We can do heavy enforcement. I think we just need to look at what we want to try to achieve. Where do we want to be at, at the end of the day?
Well, except there's also a respect for police officers that enforce the law. I mean, you know, instead of disrespect for them when they don't. So I, I'm not sure if it's going, I don't, I, I'm not sure what it would do to the community, except the ones I hear from that say, we've got to get these enforced.
Councilwoman Heller.
I appreciated the comments that you made last time about the, you know, for us to all keep in mind, about the fact that there are some neighborhoods that really don't seem to have a problem and others that really do, and that we do need to think about where the enforcement would occur. On the other hand, if we know that, it, there's a, it's possible to target. Something that stumps me a little bit is that, because I read through this again. It had been a while since we considered it before. And on page 5, um, in, starting at lines 113, rather than just ticketing, there's a whole section that talks about confiscation of fireworks. And, and in the beginning of this ordinance, it deputizes the fire chief and pretty much everybody in the fire department, if the fire chief would choose to do that, to, to be part of the team for enforcement. And that hasn't really been discussed much yet in our discussions here. And in, in talking to people beforehand, the idea of having, having some regular patrol, whether it's police and including fire, perhaps, either not necess, I mean, there could be a conversation here about how that enforcement would occur. And if the preferred way is a warning, and it, it better be gone when we get back. Either it's the police that are out on a call, or the fire department guys patrolling with the truck. And, and I, I don't know where one would draw the line between when one would ticket and when one would just take the fireworks. But that authority is clearly here, and we're not using it, it seems. Or even talking about how to, and deploy that as a strategy.
Right. But confiscation of fireworks, you would have to have a violation that takes place. And then again, it's determined a violation, because we already said, if we, we passed it, I think, what? The 29th through the 5th is when you can buy fireworks or whatever. That means you can possess them. So just because you have them doesn't mean we can confiscate them. We're going to have to have the violation at the front end of that that constitutes violation, which would give us the constitutional grounds to take the property.
So, if I may, so if someone was setting off fireworks, obviously, and then they had more that were not yet set off, and it was, I don't know, June 23rd, just to keep it way out, could, under this ordinance, you, your people, or the fire department people, take the rest of the fireworks?
Yes. But we'd take enforcement action, because that would, would give us the grounds to take the fireworks. We wouldn't just confiscate them in a situation like that, because they are so out of bounds of the ordinance itself at that point. Because, uh, we can set them off on certain dates. So outside of the boundaries that far, we would take enforcement action and then also confiscate the fireworks.
Okay. I mean, I take that one because we haven't decided what the dates would be yet, but I knew it would be way out. But I mean, part of the concern is...
Same as at 11 o'clock at night on the, the 3rd of July, or the 2nd of July, which would be outside the timeframe, you know, if we have that. Then we would confiscate them, but we would also take enforcement action in that particular case. We wouldn't, if we have a violation of the ordinance, which gives us a reason to be there to confiscate their property, we're going to take enforcement action.
And when you say take enforcement action, that means also issue a ticket? Criminal charges?
Yes. That could be a citation, or if they're illegal-type fireworks, a criminal arrest, you know, in custody arrest. But enforcement action is, would be citation or custody arrest.
Okay. So even though this ordinance provides that the firefighters could confiscate as well, help me with the connection, does that mean they really can't help because the enforcement action is...
Well, I don't have legal background, but I think when you get into the situation where you start taking people's property, you have to have the foundation to take that. And the legal justification to take a person's property is there's a criminal act that has corresponded with it.
Because the lines 113 to 115 say it can happen.
He's absolutely correct. I mean, the fire department would not be able to just go confiscate, confiscate folks' property, and that includes fireworks. So I know, I know, I know what this says, but he can't deputize the fire department to...
Almost they'd have to.
Yeah. They would. It'd have to be teams of the police department along with the fire department.
Or something. I'm just, you know, it's fair.
Right. I get it.
People think if it's in the ordinance, we can do it.
Yep.
So...
Thank you for your question. We have other people. Councilman... Okay. Councilman Cohen.
After my comments, I'm going to call the questions. So do you want to speak first?
You know, I hear, um, comments from Councilwoman Cleer that this is out of control. I don't know that it's out of control. Uh, I think it's an activity our city has experienced for years. And I think the last time Chief you appeared before us, I asked the question about how many calls for service we get on that night that are specifically for fireworks complaints, as compared to the other calls that we're getting for other acts. And I know that that's, it's a large number. I know that in the past, it's been my experience that we tried to en route from one call to the other, maybe go through that area where somebody has complained about fireworks, because we know we, there's a higher importance to the other call, so we have to get to it first, at least try to make a presence as we go to that call. And out of control, uh, one thing that's in this ordinance makes it very clear there's supposed to be adult supervision at all these opportunities. That's where the control should start, not with the police department. Now, if the adults know what the law is, and they can impose what they want to happen in their yard, they can make a big difference. They are as much responsible for whether or not those fireworks get shot off on the proper days and during the proper times. To lay it all on the police department is an unfair expectation. Uh, to include the fire department is something that is a real stretch, because I don't think the fire department wants to get involved in enforcement of those kinds of misdemeanors. The one thing that I would also caution against, and I've heard the request, is to maybe dedicate officers to that enforcement on an overtime status. Well, I know how the budget works at the police department. I know if you take from this pot, you're going to have to, um, give up something else. And I, as a citizen, now not a policeman, would rather have my tax dollars go to enforcement of more serious crimes and activities in the city than fireworks. And if you wanted to do that, you might consider, in, in something that you and I have talked about, Chief, is reassignment, because you have people on duty, maybe in a detective status or, um, crime scene investigation status. They're already on duty, so you don't have to call them back for overtime. But just assign them to take some of those calls. And some of them will be in unmarked cars, so they won't see them coming. So that's another way to use on-duty staff, maybe, to try and take up that call load and avoid the overtime status for some of the calls that do come in. It's just that I know the responsibility belongs with ourselves, to police ourselves, rather than counting on the police department to do it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for covering the, um, deputize the fire department. That was one of my questions. But, um, I just, I don't think we should be doing any of this. I see tomorrow, now, we're going to be bad-for-business and unpatriotic if we keep going down this road. And I think what we really need is better education of the cutoff times on when we need to stop shooting fireworks. So if the laws ends up saying 11 o'clock, we need to educate the parents, is probably what it is, that then we need to cut, we need to stop shooting fireworks off at 11, or whatever the cutoff time is. So on that, I know we have a motion and a second. I'd like to call the questions, so we can move on to the next item. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. Just so that everybody knows what we're voting on, Councilman Cohen has called the question, and the question is discharge dates to be the 3rd and the 4th from 10, uh, till, to 11 p.m. Is that correct? Okay. Please vote.
We have five yes, with Ortiz, Emerson, and Cohen voting no.
So at this point in time, the days that the fireworks are going to be fired are only two days. And those days are going to be July 3rd and July 4th up to 11 p.m.
From 10, 10 a.m. through 11 p.m.?
10 a.m. to 11 p.m. Just the 3rd and the 4th. Next item?
Um, the third proposed, proposed revision relates to the sound or noise level. That would be in lines 70 through 73, bottom of page 3 and to the top of page 4. There was no such provision previously. This is a new subsection that's being proposed by staff.
Councilman Lester.
I would just make a motion that we strike number 3 from, uh, from the policy. I just don't know how, uh, even with the, the problems we have with enforcement, how this would even remotely be enforced.
So we have Councilman Lester making the motion. Councilman Padilla seconding this motion. Is there any comment before we...
Mayor, you don't need to strike it, because this is, as currently written, it does not exist. This would have been an addition proposed by staff, so... Oh, that's right. It is. It's in the other line. Yeah, you're right. Take it all back.
Okay. So we have a motion to strike that language in the, in the ordinance. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments before we vote this up or down? Councilwoman Heller.
This really seemed to be people's biggest problem. I, um, I know that I've talked a little bit, or heard a little bit from Mr. Gerber, that it was kind of hard to find out they aren't raided, per se. But I had a conversation with a constituent who called in, who, who started out by saying, "We love our neighborhood fireworks. We don't want to give up anything. We like the Big Bangs." "We love our neighborhood fireworks. We don't want to give up anything. We like the Big Bangs." And I, and he said, "How would you measure it?" And I said, "I don't know. I think they're going to check and just find out which fireworks are the really big ones, and we would probably ban those, like we've banned metal sparklers or, you know, anything else that we would choose, and go from there." And he still, he kind of came around and became really helpful on it. And he said, "Well, maybe if you want to get, to not have the really big ones, the better way to do that is to say that," and again, I don't know these numbers. He said, "Something that's bigger than an inch and a half, and I don't know if that's the right measurement, or two inches or three inches. For the most part, the bigger they are, the louder they are." And, and so that was a new suggestion. It would certainly be easier to figure out because you'd just be looking at them, and even in the dark, you'd have an idea, or you could measure them real quick. So I'll just share that with you all. I certainly would be supportive if there, if we could figure out a way to do it of banning what they call the mortars, or the Excalibur, as the guy from Jake's described it to us, because even on the days that they're legal, that seems to be what's really troubling a lot of people.
Councilwoman Clear?
So one of my constituents, Ms. Miller, I would like to ask the chief, if there's a way then, if, how they would enforce this, and if so, I mean, what would you have to have to write a citation for this? And would it stand up in court if you could, if you couldn't prove how loud it was, but it looked like it was? I guess I need, what do you think about this?
I believe a noise organs like that would be next to impossible to enforce. We don't have the capability nor the means to do that effectively. And once again, not being present when that takes place, again, we wouldn't have a way, even if we had a witness that said to her to go off decibel levels or whatever, we could not enforce that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready for a vote? We are? Okay, so this vote is to vote up or down, to, the vote is to eliminate the language of the noise level. So voting yes would eliminate, would strike that language. The second was made by Councilman Padilla.
We have seven yes, Ms. Heller voting no. The motion passes.
The motion passes. The decibel level, the noise level, has been taken out of the language of the ordinance. If the staff could read the next amendment?
The next amendment pertains to the permit fee that's to be charged. That would be found in line 99 on page, on page 5 of the ordinance. Currently, the permit fee is 280. The proposed permit fee would be $500.
Do we have a motion for the increase, or do we have an alternate motion with regards to the fees? Councilwoman Ortiz.
I'd like to leave the fees the way that they are. We're taking away time. We're taking away days. But we're increasing the fees, so I make a motion to leave the fees the way that they are.
Do we have a second to leave the fees at 280?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Emerson. Do we have discussion with regards to the fees? Councilwoman Claire?
Can you remind me why we changed this, or who changed this, or what, what was the reason?
Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Clear, it was based on input from the fire department that showed the number of hours that they, that their personnel needed to do inspections, as well as hearing testimony from folks saying how much money fireworks sales raised. And so, given that the city has to enforce and et cetera, that there was a sense that the, they could stand an increase, and they hadn't been increased for a number of years.
That was my question, my next one. So it's been years since?
I don't recall. I'm looking at Chief Duke to see if he remembers when the fee was changed.
Never, ever?
Okay. Any other comments before we go to a vote?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clear?
I'm doing math, so you have to go slow. So can we, like, too late? Because I remember the lady with the church. So maybe we could say, like, 450, and not?
So I think that at this point, if we want to change that, we would have to vote the motion up or down, and then see if the motion does not pass.
I understand, I, no, never mind. If we need it for the fire.
Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Gerber, may I ask what would cover our costs? I mean, it seems pretty arbitrary going up to 500.
Madam Mayor and Councilman Emerson, this, in a, in a sense, did cover our costs moving it up to 500. But it becomes a philosophical argument whether taxes cover costs, et cetera, but, so it's certainly a philosophical argument, but based on the number of the thousands of hours that the PD, excuse me, the fire department spends doing inspections, follow-up paperwork over a number of personnel, this came approximately close to covering our costs.
Okay. Councilman Padilla?
Thank you, Mayor. I would support Councilman Ortiz's proposal to leave it as it is. The nonprofits typically who use these sales to help raise funds, and having worked with nonprofits as mayor, as well as you know, there are limited resources on how they get their monies throughout the year. And I wouldn't want them to feel like they, that they would be impressed upon just because this, they're using this vehicle to raise funds for their organization. I would leave it in place, or if someone made an alternate motion to raise it by $50, I could see that. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Clear?
I think being good steward, I understand that, and I've always worked for nonprofits, but being good stewards of the city's money, I think we have an obligation to cover the cost for, for our fees. So I'll be supporting. I, I move that we leave it as is. Do we have a motion?
We do have a motion in a second, so at this point in time-
That's yours?
Correct. So at this point in time, what would happen is that we would exercise the vote. And if the vote is, does not pass, then we have an opportunity to bring up another motion. Okay? So at this point in time, if there's no other comments, the motion is to leave the fees at the $280 level as it currently stands without raising it to $500. We will proceed with the voting.
We have five yes. The motion passes with Heller clear and Lesser voting no.
So at this point in time, the permit fee remains at the current $280 without being raised. If the staff would read the next amendment?
The next amendment would pertain to the distance within which fireworks may be discharged in relation to a hospital. It's a new subsection. It's at lines 64 through 66 on page 3.
So if memory serves me right, there is a current, the language currently reads that it's 500 feet from-
Correct. The, the language it's being proposed for inclusion states that fireworks shall not be discharged within 500 feet of any general hospital or special hospital, as those terms are defined in KSA 65-425.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve that, or do we have a motion that is different than the 500 feet? Councilwoman Clear? Ortiz, I'm sorry. So moved to 500 feet, so we have 500 feet being approved? Do we have a second? We have a second discussion. Councilman Padilla?
I'd like some idea, and I experienced this when I was working for ABC. We had ordinances in place with regards to the sale of liquor and tobacco in adjacent to schools and, and churches. And we had a similar proposal, but the arguments were always brought up, "Well, from where is that 500 feet measured? From the corner of the building, the corner of the parking lot, the property itself? So where does the 500 feet start?" And that would be my question.
Thank you, Councilman Padilla. Staff?
Yeah. My intention when we proposed this was that it would be 500 feet from the property line of the hospital. That would be the clearest way to do that, and we can do that with our GIS staff. We can draw the areas around. That's what we did in Mason City.
Thank you, City Manager.
Councilman Lesser?
The only, the only thing I would, I would want to point out in, in regards to the 500 feet is there's 5,200 feet in a mile, so half a mile is 2,500 feet. So we're not talking a very long distance when we're talking about 500 feet, quite frankly, as far as to make a difference. The only other thing I would say is I would also propose a friendly amendment that, where it says hospital, also, we also add mental health inpatient facility.
Do we have a second for that amendment? We have a second. So we would have to first vote on the friendly amendment, and then we will go and proceed to vote with regards to the fee. So.
The individual who made the motion is okay with, with the friendly amendment, then?
Okay, so Councilwoman Ortiz, which made the motion, says that she's amicable to make any part of her motion. So now the motion reads hospitals and/or inpatient mental health institutions, and it's 500 feet. So are we ready for a vote, or is, Councilwoman Heller?
Just, just for conversation, I represent both the hospitals. 500, most city blocks are 600 feet, so 500 feet is just short of a city block away. On the one hand, this has not ever been raised as an issue to any of us, I don't think. What was proposed by someone was that we have, we have the capacity to have fireworks-free zones, which didn't really get any traction. So I really appreciate the, the staff bringing this up, but it's, it's not a problem that we've had. In terms of the inpatient facilities, I thought about that when it first came out. No one is expecting that. We have group homes that, as far as, as far as I know, have a little 4th of July celebration and go outside and set off fireworks. We haven't had a chance to ask them whether that's something that's special as part of their group home for 4th of July. So I'd be hesitant to, to do that without asking.
City Manager?
Mayor, Councilwoman Heller, when I looked at this, when we did it in previous city, this was something that I talked to the, the CEO of the hospital in my town, and he said this would be important to them, to set up a distance around. It may not be that far, but it would make a difference for them. Secondly, there's a provision in here that with approval of the chief, he can approve the special events. Consumer fireworks may be ignited or discharged for a special event pursuant to rules and regulations established by the fire chief. So he could designate the ability for them to have an event if that related to something they wanted to do specifically and authorize it for that facility, if they had a special event.
Councilwoman Clear?
I guess I need to know more about the mental hea, who are we talking? Because we have a daughter that lives in an assisted living facility, and they do have that little party, and she really looks forward to that. So I'm not sure. I guess I need to know what exactly mental health would we be looking at?
Councilman Lesser, would you like to elaborate since it was your motion?
I don't know really how to answer that question. My intent was for mental health inpatient facilities that, that individuals with, were, were at with, with, whether it was PTSD, with, with those type of conditions.
Yes.
Mayor, Councilmember Lesser, I think each of you got the sheet about the definitions that are contained in the KSA that's referenced in this proposed new subsection. And the definition of special hospital means an establishment with an organized medical staff of physicians with permanent facilities that include inpatient beds, and with medical services, including physician services and continuous registered professional nursing services for not less than 24 hours of each day, to provide diagnosis and treatment for patients who have specified medical conditions. So I, I think that-
It's already included?
Yeah, that that would include that, as well as perhaps other.
I would withdraw then my, my friendly amendment.
Okay. So then what we have on the table is ensuring that hospitals, as defined by what the city attorney has described, would have a 500-foot clearance. Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Robertson, if I may ask on that, in reading to that definition, it occurs to me that a lot of, like, nursing homes, or I don't know if that's a correct term to use anymore, assisted living, or I don't, might qualify under this. And I'm thinking that takes, I'm thinking there in District 4, we have one on 21st Street by Hillcrest, and that's going to take up a huge swath of, of a neighborhood.
I don't know that I can really answer that question, to be honest with you, but this references, that includes inpatient beds with medical services, including physician services and continuous registered professional nursing services for not less than 24 hours per day. It is 24?
I'm sorry, Mr. Gerber, do you have any? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but it's the interest of you.
Councilman, I was just telling the city attorney, I mean, that's, the definition speaks to 24 hours a day. I don't know that every nursing home would have those folks on staff 24 hours a day.
Well, they have some continuous.
You know, they have different levels. You know, you're kind of out in an apartment at first, and then you slowly move to, to full-time care. It's been my experience with them.
Councilwoman Clear?
Has there been some, why is this special hospital in there? Was there, is there documentation somewhere that this is a problem for them? Why would we? Well, besides, I know you said like PTSD or something, but.
The only thing that I can say is that we identified it as something that I had seen in prior ordinances related to this as being something that we approve around the holiday by eliminating it from around hospitals. It makes a difference to the hospital patients. The intent is not, and this way we proposed it with the definitions from KSA, that it would not apply to nursing homes or assisted living-type facilities. That this is strictly for our hospitals. If you want, the alternative that we could do is we could specifically call out which hospitals, and, you know, say the VA Hospital, Starmont Vale, the KU Medical, Francis Campus, and specifically call out that. I don't know that there are any other hospitals or special hospitals, or mental hospitals. But we could do that and amend that, and come back and amend that once we have that specific.
Is that amicable to the body? Just, you know, to? I, I think that at this point in time, because we have a motion and a second, it may be best to see if, if the body would like to do that. And then if we, if we vote it down, we could go ahead and elaborate on the language of which type of hospital is being defined there?
Councilwoman Heller?
Again, I have the two general hospitals in my district, and because I didn't know, and I thought, gosh, there's 500 feet between the, the hospital structure and the other side of the street in all those cases, so I didn't even check with my neighborhoods or anything, or the hospitals for that matter. So, boy, I'd be inclined, I was okay with it, but as, the more we're talking about it, I'd be inclined to not do it this time, and perhaps have the committee or interested council members pursue it for a future amendment. But I don't want to do something with unintended consequences that we hadn't, I hadn't fallen through, anyway.
Councilwoman Clear?
However, I think it's really important, a hospital, the VA, I'd hate to put this off for, you know, a year. I mean, I think we could put the VA in there definitely.
I don't know, but I haven't consulted with the VA about whether they think it's a problem.
I did.
You did?
Yeah, I did, and they do.
Okay. Because if we go all the way to the grounds, it means that the people over across Gage won't be able to shoot off fireworks. If it's just from buildings, that would all be contained within the VA grounds, and people in the neighborhoods around there would still be okay.
in the neighborhoods around there would still be okay.
Okay, so, we have a motion, we have a second, and the motion would be to have a 500-foot clearance from hospitals. So, if we vote this up, it means that we're adding the clearance. If it's voted down, there is no clearance to be added to hospital grounds. We now proceed with the voting.
We have a clear, Ortiz, and Lesser voting yes.
Okay, the Councilwoman Clear.
I'm so sorry, but Councilmember Hiller told me that I can do this. I voted incorrectly on one of these, and can I... What can I do about that?
We could reconsider your motion, and if you were on the prevailing side, I think... And actually, it's the same day, so I think that you could just... Same meeting, we could reconsider the vote.
That's what I want to do.
You have to be on the prevailing side.
You have to be on the prevailing side. Were you on the prevailing side?
I was.
Okay. So, first of all, just... So, we have a clear. The motion to add a distance from the hospital failed.
Okay.
So, there is no language now in the ordinance that speaks to clearance from hospitals. Now, we go back to Councilwoman Clear, and she would like to have a reconsideration. Councilwoman Clear.
I'm new. About the permit fee.
Okay.
It was about the permit fee, because I thought I voted to change it, and I voted to keep it.
Okay. So, there is a motion to reconsider the permit fee that was left at $280, so that she would like to revert that for the $500 proposed. Is there a second to revert that?
Vote to reconsider.
A vote to reconsider. Is there a vote to reconsider that? Is there a second?
First, though, can she just change her vote?
Yeah, I think she can.
I think she can.
With approval. It has to be unanimous approval.
I would defer to legal. I thought that we would have to vote.
Right, and this is on the permit fee, correct? Okay, so, it's showing that, yeah, councilmembers Hiller, Clear, and Lesser voted no. So, it would be five to three, and that would have made it four to four.
I wanted to vote to keep 280 to five.
No, you did vote correctly.
You did vote correctly.
Or how you want to vote.
Yeah.
No. Hiller, Clear, and Lesser voted no.
Want to make six to two?
I don't know what I want to make it. I just want to...
She's all right.
Yeah.
It's a weird bit of a question.
So, I'm good?
You did vote correctly.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sorry.
Okay. Councilman Emerson.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I don't even know if this is proper, if I can do this or not, but what Mrs. Clear said about the VA, I mean, we... I think we do have a duty to those gentlemen to protect them, and ladies there, to protect them as much as we can. I would be amenable to doing something up to, like, the Gage Boulevard, which would be like 400 feet from the building. Is that something that, you know, maybe a radius of the building? I mean, the grounds, you already can't shoot them on the ground, so effectively, the only side that really matters is on the Gage side.
21st?
Yes, in the 21st side. But in each case, it's four... It may be even 500 feet from the street, but it's... Problem going from the property line is what kills you, because you're going all the way out in those neighborhoods. Is there any... I don't know if that's something there would be any appetite for.
Councilman Lesser?
And Councilman Emerson, I appreciate... I just think it's a little bit disingenuous. I think we either decide we're going to protect them, and if we're going to, then we do it from what the distance is, that it's not going to bother them, and if we're not going to, then we don't, quite frankly. You know what I mean?
Right, I understand, but it's a pretty arbitrary thing, you know, saying it's from a property line. You know, it's really from the building that you care about. Again, I'd say to leave it totally unprotected.
Councilwoman Clear?
I guess in my head, if you go to this side of Gage or this side of 21st, and you don't go a block different, is it going to matter? You know, if you're here or the next block over? So, I don't know. It would have to be wide. Is that something I can bring back?
I think we can. If people want to work on it.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, City Manager.
I think at this point, with the decision that we have related to not to have a distance created, let us do some work relative to measuring that distance from those buildings. And if we can determine that there is a recommended issue, we still have a couple of months until we... This particular issue would be... Need to be decided, and if we can circulate the information, and if there's an appetite to make an amendment to this ordinance for that particular issue, we'll circulate the information. If there is support, then we'll bring it back for you. Let us do some homework, please.
Okay. It seems like... Councilman Mays?
With all due respect, I would prefer to put the fireworks ordinance to bed tonight. And I would make... I think I would make an amendment to... I would make a motion to ban the fireworks within 500 feet of the VA structures.
So, being the structures, it pretty much clears the parking lot, so it allows what the council members were discussing. The neighborhoods that are contingent are no longer affected. It's just around the grounds? Is that what you're... What this intent is, Councilman Mays?
More or less. I mean, from the main building, I think you're right. There are some other buildings on that property that may be closer to the property line, but I think that this is... I think the impact on the people in the neighborhoods would be very small. I can't imagine there's more than a couple houses that would be affected by it. I think the distance is pretty large. But I think it's important that we make some... Take some kind of action to just show that, you know, that we care.
Okay, so, we have a motion that it would be protecting the VA Hospital 500 feet from the buildings as a perimeter. If there's no further comment, then we will proceed... Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. Would City Manager... Or City Attorney, would that include the little park behind it, Felker Park? See, I don't think that's going to touch Felker or the...
Those buildings on the south side, I don't know how far...
It's not illegal there. Why is it illegal there?
I thought it wasn't City Parks.
Is it?
They're county parks, and it's not illegal.
There you go. There you go.
Good point.
So, I mean, I agree with the structures, but if they're going to go there in the park and do it on the backside, that's... We're defeating our purpose, so maybe we can make that radius. Could we do something like that? Make the radius to include that?
Looking at the map that Deputy Manager Gerber has, I think that even the southern buildings were going to be 500 feet from those southern buildings before you get to the park, based on it's just using the eye, naked eye here, but looking at it, the distance, it would likely be in that neighborhood.
I just feel like we weren't playing ball there. We're kind of... Kind of close. I just... I would just hate for us to pass that if that doesn't include that.
Yeah.
Because people... A lot of people do go in that parking lot.
I think it only touches the northern edge of it, where it looks like there's a diamond, baseball diamond, softball diamond, and so I think there would still be the majority of the park that would be usable.
I mean, I would not like to see that being used if we're going to do that, if we're going to go in and say that, but I don't know if we can do that.
The question that I would have for legal with regards to that statement is, can we impose city laws on a county park?
Yes, they would have to follow our ordinance, those that are shooting in that park.
Okay, Councilwoman Clear?
So, then could I add to his amendment, including Felker Park?
Yeah. Councilman Mays?
I would prefer that we not, and I would say that that could be a separate amendment.
Can I ask why?
Simplicity. I think if we start... I think calling out the VA by itself is probably more specific than I would like to be in the ordinance, but I think it's important that we make it. But I think when we start talking about individual parks, I mean, we're opening a whole new can of worms.
Well, I only brought that up because the park's on the backside of that, you know, and I see a lot of people go to the schools, go to the parks, you know, that are in apartments to shoot off fireworks and stuff like that. And that was my only concern, is what we're trying to do is get them out of that area, but leaving that open would bring them in that area.
But if they're more than 500 feet away from any structure, I don't see why it would matter. Felker Park is huge. It's a really large park, and if people are going to shoot fireworks there, I think... I mean, it sounds like about 95% of the park is at least more than 500 feet away. And if it is just a ball diamond, I believe Shawnee County Parks and Rec locks those up at night anyways. I don't think people are going to be shooting them off on the ball fields, are they?
Yeah, they do. They're not locked up.
Councilwoman Hiller?
If I could ask Councilman Emerson again.
Yes.
Is it... It's your understanding that the VA prohibits discharge of fireworks on their grounds anyway?
Yes, ma'am. I'm certain it's federal property, and you cannot do it in federal parks or any federal property that I know of. Now, I don't know... I don't know that for fact, but I know, well, it's not the hard way, you cannot shoot them off in national parks.
Okay.
Yeah. Friendly thing. That was a note... Down the Ozark, so we thought, you know, Missouri...
I wasn't going to ask you any questions.
Yeah, but they have pretty loose rules.
Given that, Madam Mayor, with the best of intentions, if us adding that they can't be shot off on the VA from 500 feet from any VA structure is basically redundant, because that would be within the limits of the VA grounds, and it can't be done anyway, I appreciate the, you know, wanting to be responsive, but I'm not sure we need to if that's all we would be protecting is grounds that are already protected.
Councilman Mays, considering that that is already a protected area, would you like to reconsider your motion, or no?
No, I'd like to vote on it.
Okay. So, that being said, we have a motion made from Councilman Mays and seconded by Councilman Emerson that states that we would have a 500-feet perimeter from the VA Hospital. So, all those, please proceed to voting.
If I may?
Sure.
Before you announce the vote. I'm only not going to support it, only because I believe that the ball diamond is a very important part of this, and so that's why I'm voting not to support it, because I want them off the grounds all the way, so... Especially if that's what we're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have five yes. Motion passes with Ortiz, Padilla, and Cohen voting no.
So, the motion passes, so we now have a distance of 500 feet from the VA Hospital. If the staff would read, I think that we're back to now, to the time that this ordinance becomes effective, or is there another one that had to be... Councilwoman Ortiz?
Madam Mayor, I know that we talked about on the fourth, being on the prevailing side, I'd like to reconsider my vote. I actually was not. I would like to see us have the time till 11:59. That is the fourth. If you go out and you go to the fireworks show, time you get home is 10:00, 10:30. So, I'd like to make that motion that just on the fourth, it's 11:59.
So, this would be our second amendment, which is discharge pertaining to discharge. The current motion has it July 3rd and 4th from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Councilwoman Ortiz, being on the prevailing side, is requesting reconsideration to change it on the fourth up to 11:59 p.m. Is there a second? Councilwoman Clear seconds the reconsideration of that vote.
I'm not... I was doing my best to keep up. I'm not sure she was on the prevailing side.
Yes, Councilwoman Ortiz?
If we voted for it, and we've... And I voted in favor to make it 11:00, then...
I think you voted against it.
Yes, it's... We're looking at the vote now.
Oh, is it?
It was 530, I believe it was Ortiz and...
Okay. Oh, okay. Councilwoman Clear?
But I would make that motion.
And you were on the prevailing side? Okay, so now, Councilwoman Clear, who was on the prevailing side, is bringing the reconsideration, and we had a second, and that second was?
Oh, I'll second it.
Oh, Councilmember Cohen. So, the reconsideration would leave the two days of the 3rd and the 4th as the days of discharge. However, it would change the 4th of July to go all the way up to 11:59. Councilman Hiller?
The reason to extend the earlier days to 11:00 was theoretically to sync up all the way along and have the same time. We had a lot of people that really wanted us to stop at 10:00 every night and understand it, but if we wanted to go to midnight on the 4th, which I understand, would we want to go back and just leave it at 10:00 on the 3rd? Is there any... Just looking for...
Councilman Mays?
Just a point of order. Is it necessary to do a motion to reconsider? Wouldn't a new amendment be in order?
No, it was voted on, so they'll have to do a motion to reconsider.
Okay.
Okay, so, up for a vote is the reconsideration of the second amendment that we made, and the reconsideration would include the 3rd and the 4th being discharge dates. On the 3rd, the discharge would be from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and on the 4th of July, we will go all the way up to midnight.
Mayor, have we done the vote on the motion reconsider?
Oh, actually...
Was that the question you were asking, Councilmember Mays?
Yes, that's what it was.
Okay.
Yeah.
You have to vote to reconsider first.
So, first we would vote to reconsider. So, voting yes, we would reconsider the motion. Voting no, we would leave it as is.
Mayor, could you clarify that again? What is it that we're voting?
The current vote is to reconsider the motion. At this point in time, we understand that Councilwoman Clear and Councilman Emerson want to reconsider the motion. If we vote to yes, then we will reconsider the time. So, seven having voted yes, we are now at the point of reconsidering the times. So, the proposal that Councilwoman Clear... Councilwoman Clear, since you're... I don't want to make the motion for you, but would you state the motion?
To try and keep everybody happy, I want it to be July 3rd till 10:00 to 11:00, July 4th, 10:00 to 11:59.
Do we have a second? Councilman Cohen, seconds. Okay, so now, we would be voting on extending to midnight, which is 11:59 on the 4th of July. Councilman Mays?
Honestly, I would like to see a little more consistency and have the same time both days. I... days. I completely understand moving it past 10 o'clock, because I think 10 o'clock is way too early. It doesn't get dark until 9:15. I also think that it, just from a personal perspective, I would rather have them shot off to midnight on the 3rd, because I know that on the 4th, me and most of my neighbors are going to have the day off, whereas on the 5th, we're going to have to go back to work. So I, I'm probably going to vote against this amendment, because I don't like different times on different days, but I would probably support something if they were the same.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Okay. So voting yes means that you are increasing on the 4th till midnight. Proceed with the voting.
Okay, we have five yes, with Padilla and Mays voting no unless they're abstaining, so it's approved.
We have voted, and the days remain the 3rd and the 4th. On the 3rd, fireworks stop at 11 o'clock in the evening, and on the 4th of July, there is an extension to 11:59. Now, that being said, if memory serves me correctly, at this point in time, the last amendment that we have to consider is when this ordinance will go into effect. There was a motion earlier in the meeting that stated that they would like for this to be approved as of the date of approval, and there is a proposal also to do this after July 5th, so that it would become enforceable in the year 2019. So at this point in time, I would entertain a motion for either position. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. I'll make a motion. This starts on 2019, for 2019.
So therefore, after July, it's enforceable after July 5th, 2018. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor that this ordinance will come into effect after July 5th, 2018. We have a second. So just so that everybody knows what we are voting on, because I just, there's been a lot of policymaking tonight, discharge would be from the 29th of June to July 4th. Discharge, sales, I'm sorry, sales would be from June 29th to July 4th. Secondly, discharge will be the 3rd and the 4th, the 3rd till 11, the 4th till midnight. There is no talk about noise level. Permit fee remains at 280. Distance from the hospital will be only the VA, and there is a 500-foot clearance. And what we're voting on, based on the motion and the second, is that this will all go into effect next year.
And the reason I'm saying that is because I know people have ordered their fireworks and, you know, this will give them ample enough time to get it together. Thank you.
Councilwoman Claire.
Well, I can't support this, because my whole reason for changing this is still there. The veterans and the dogs and the con people. So I can't support, I'd like for this to go into effect tomorrow, but, so I can't support next year.
Councilman Emerson.
Mayor, thank you. I will support this, but I'll be honest, I, there are just not any, I guess, I don't have a lot of constituents who want to change anything about the current situation. As a matter of fact, I had an N.A. meeting a couple weeks ago, and afterwards, the gentleman who's a veteran called me at home, actually, I guess it was the next night, and he said, "Don't let them change that. I have my family, my grandkids, everybody comes, and this year they're coming on the Sunday before, because that's where they can travel." If we enact this now, particularly the way it is, what does he do, you know? Cancel your trip, we won't do it. And especially in District 4, we're right there around the lake, so all the families tend to come out there and congregate, and then they watch the Go Fourth Show. So this is a huge thing, this is a huge celebration for District 4. I really appreciate, and I know, Mrs. Claire, this sounds like it's more of an issue in your district, but I just don't, it's probably 98% to 2%, you know, against changing any of this. So I will be supportive of putting it in place next year, and subject to perhaps my constituents will give me an earful and try to change it, frankly, in the meantime, before next year.
Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, as I understand it, if we vote, it will go into effect July 5th, 2018.
Correct.
So it will not affect this year's anniversary or this year's celebration. I will support that, you know, along with Councilman Henderson. There are a lot of plans in place, my neighborhood too. I know there are a lot of people that have large gatherings, they've already taken time off. Some of my family members have already asked me, have we got something planned for this year, so they can put in for time off, because it takes a while to get those approved. And I think it's a, it's a, not a big jump, but I do think that we need to be careful and not just throw people in to something brand-new without giving them some consideration. I appreciate the efforts and concerns for the veterans and for the animals and so forth, but one year isn't a long time to wait. It goes by pretty fast.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Heller.
If I can, if we can clarify, I think that with the language that it would become effective on July 5th this year, then it would cut off the July 5th sales this year. And I didn't hear any objections. I mean, when various vendors talked about it, they didn't seem to be too worried about that. But if we do have it become effective July 5, it would.
Correct.
We currently, our current ordinance allows sales on the 5th, so it would cut off that one day of sales this year, if approved. And like I said, I didn't hear any objections.
Okay. All right, same no other hands going up. We are proceeding with a motion. The motion would be to start this ordinance as of the 5th of July of this year. We proceed with the voting.
We have seven yes, Mr. Cohen voting no, so the motion's approved.
Very well. At this point, legal, I have a question. We have to now vote on the ordinance as amended? Okay, so now we proceed with the full ordinance that will start July 5th, with the changes that I outlined in the last, in the last vote. So do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Councilwoman Claire, Councilwoman Ortiz makes the motion. Councilwoman Ortiz, seconds. This motion is to adopt all of the amendments in the ordinance with regards to fireworks for the city of Topeka. So we, do we, it seems like there's no hands up, so I will call the vote. If you would proceed to vote.
We have six yes, with Mr. Emerson and Cohen voting no, so the motion's approved.
The motion passes. We have, in Councilman Mays' words, put to bed the fireworks ordinance tonight. So we have even clapping in the back. This is not common. So at this point in time, we will proceed with the public comments. If City Manager would start.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what announcements? Brain.
On the March 13 preliminary agenda, we will have one park remission for the St. Patrick Square. We have one board appointment to the Civil Service Commission for Veronica Padilla, and we will have on the consent agenda, two workers' compensation claim, one for Billy Casey, the other Brian Hill, and then we'll have a discussion on proposed 2019 to 2028 capital improvement plan.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The only comment I have, announcement today that I have, is that today, this Topeka Zoo had a USTA inspection. The inspection was an unannounced inspection as part of their semi-annual inspection process. I'm happy to report that there were no infractions, that we had no citations, no violations. I want to thank Brendan Wiley and his staff for their excellent work that they're doing in maintaining and keeping our zoo in strong, good order.
Thank you, City Manager. I would like to start with first congratulating Mr. Mike Padilla and his wife, Ronnie Padilla, who celebrated 50 years of marriage. Pretty happy weekend. Want to just encourage everybody and remind everyone that we have a JDO meeting. It's a special meeting on the 14th of March. We had great discussion with regards to quality of life issues. However, we do have some discussions with regards to new market tax credits that are going to come up, and there is some expediency. So that's the same day that we also have our first budget session. So we have, we kind of compromised, and the budget hearings, the community open session is going to be at the library at 5:30. 6:30, we're going to be here, and it should be a rather short meeting. In addition to that, wanted to also congratulate, it was a great weekend in Topeka last, it was a great week last week. We had the induction of Deb and Randy Clayton, Brent Bowles, Susan Garland House, and very dear to my heart, may he rest in peace, Pops, also known as Fab Phil or Phil Morse, into the Hall of Fame. And it was a beautiful event. If you were able to participate, my congratulations to Ashley Cheris and the group that put the event together. It was an inspiring event that reminds people of the power that our citizens have in our community to do great things. The other thing is that I want to give a shout-out to Mayor Pete Buttigieg. He was here last Saturday, talking at Washington Days, and it was great to have yet another mayor from a city that is very similar to the city of Topeka, talk about the future. But it's great to have a connection with somebody who has a city similar to ours in many ways, and who has grown the population 100,000-fold. I mean, not fold, but 100,000 more of the individuals that they had. So I am hopeful to do a road trip over to South Bend, Indiana, and see what the magic sauce is and what Mayor Pete has been doing, because the communities are extremely similar. And that is all for me, that we would proceed to, Councilman Hayes, Mays.
Thank you, Mayor. You guys may have noticed I have my Ichabod tie on tonight, and congratulations are in order to first-year coach Brett Ballard and the Washburn Ichabods for making the 13th NCAA postseason appearance in school history. This is the first time they've done it since 2012, so they'll be playing on Saturday. I don't know if they've announced the time yet, but we certainly want to wish them well, and believe it'll be on the radio and livestreamed, at least on the Internet. So I want to congratulate them. Thanks.
Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to tell you guys the importance of filing a police report when that time is due. This afternoon, a lot of times I take off in the afternoon to start reading over the agenda and seeing what we have going on tonight, and I don't know if you guys do the same thing or not. But my wife called, and somebody had ran into our car and drove off. So, you know, us only having liability insurance on our car, we're thinking, you know, what do we do? Do we file the police report or not? Well, come to find out, somebody saw the accident happen and followed the other car, and they ended up, they, we sent, they sent an officer over, and he says, "Hey, we've been looking for you, because we're wondering who the other car was, that somebody was following the other car. They found the, they found the truck, but not the driver yet." So anyway, if we wouldn't have called, they wouldn't have found the other party, which was us, and we're like, should we do it or not? And I just tell you, it's important, the importance of police reports is very important. So, thanks.
Councilman Lesser. Councilwoman Heller.
I have a couple of things. I did accept the invitation that all of us got to go to the meeting at the library on Sunday at 6. It was an invitation, as it turned out, from a concerned nurse who had invited other healthcare professionals, emergency room, particular trauma room, professionals, parents, folks from 501, nonprofits, and social workers. The reason for that meeting was there was a great concern about our teen suicides, teen violence, and wondering if there was a way to work together to help reduce that in the community. It was a very concerned group. I do think that they will meet again, and so I just wanted to let you know that. Watch for news of that. There was one thing that came up, though, that besides their wanting to work on prevention and intervention at the time, that they also talked about how they felt like a lot of the kids didn't have hope. And one of the, right or wrong, that just came out. And one of the things that was mentioned was, you know, an opportunity for a job and work. And it struck me that maybe we could all do a better job, and we've got full employment here, and we have employers that are looking for good workers, and I'm not sure we put the word out as well as we could about the fact that for our young people, if they take whatever track they want to go to, that there really are jobs and great opportunities from them here. I've heard it again and again, and it struck me on Sunday evening that maybe we need to get that word out better than we have. So I just wanted to share both of those. I also spent the day today at Washburn University, at the Fair Housing and Financial Markets Diversity Symposium. It was put on by the Washburn Law School, and I'll tell you what an event. They had stellar legal people from all over the country as speakers and panelists at that event. And I wanted to report a couple of things. A, with our considerations of neighborhood redevelopment and economic development, that focus and that subject matter was really timely and meaningful, I think, for us in this community. I was really glad that I went, but I'll tell you, there were a lot of Washburn Law students there too, soaking it up. And I learned a little about what they're reading in class and what they're doing, and it's really on point for the kinds of things that we do here. So further, in terms of meeting some of them, I just wanted you all to know that with the speakers and that with those students, with just kind of anecdotally meeting, I went to a dinner with them last night and then spent the time today, they are really impressed with Topeka and what we're doing. Those guests from Harvard and Georgetown-educated lawyers from all over, as well as the law students that have come to study here, a very diverse and very capable group of folks. I also wanted you to know that the mayor did a fabulous job of giving some remarks at the beginning of the lunchtime. And finally, that what they were talking about was neighborhoods and housing patterns and lending patterns and so on, particularly to do with fair housing and fair lending. And really, from the examples that they talked about across the country, Topeka looks pretty good. We've done a good job of dispersing these supported housing that we have in the community, as well as the lending, and our foreclosures weren't as bad as other places. Last but not least, I think you all got an email from Liz about the St. Patrick's Day Parade. We have always carried the banner in front of the parade, too, the council people, so let her know. That's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Claire.
Couple things. Boys and Girls Club Gala is coming up at the end of the month. Get your ticket. Not, and I know we get invited to a lot of things, but this is, this is to, they recognize a lot of the kids at this event, and so when a lot of people are there, these kids feel really important. So buy your tickets to the gala. I have three daughters' birthdays on the 12th, so happy birthday, Casey, Crystal, Kelsey. And I do want to thank all my constituents for getting in touch with me about the fireworks. It is, it really makes this job easier when we know what you're thinking and what you want. So I want to thank you for the fireworks, and then I want to tell you a story. So I told you I was at my vet today, so I took my dogs to the vet today, and I have one teenage dog that doesn't listen to a word I say. And so we came out of the vet, okay, the vet is at 21st and Yurish, in between Yurish and whatever that other street is, and she gets loose. So zero degrees, running up and down 21st Street. Okay, I have four people stop that was trying to entice her to, "Come here." We had a police officer, and I was so focused on the dog, I don't know if it was Sheriff or TPD, had his lights on in the middle, so I slowed down for this stupid dog. And so after about 20 minutes, she ran back to the vet's office. I opened the door, and she went in, and she got in the car. But it lifted my heart to see those people stopping. Somebody's just sat out there on the curb going, "Come here, come here." And, but the people that, you know, tried to help, even though she didn't listen, but it was uplifting.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can't top that story. But, you know, week after week, I sit here and I talk about our free smoke alarms. And we had a house on Southeast 6th Street that if you go by there, it's, you can see right through there, and it's really, really sad. Chief, did, did they have a smoke detector?
Yes, ma'am.
They did. I watched this gentleman, Hispanic gentleman, and his family that have taken this house from rags to riches, and he has really done a lot of work. And, you know, when I go past there every day, to and fro, it's really, really sad. So, I do take it to heart about, you know, you guys might think I'm playing, but I do take it to heart with our smoke detectors, the manpower that the fire department was there, putting that out was unbelievable, unremarkable. Our police officers, because 6th Street, I always say it's an entry to Topeka. It's a gateway to come into Topeka, and there was, they were busy. I think it was about 2:00 when it started or something, and they were there well into the late hours of the night. So, again, we have free smoke detectors for anyone that wants them. They will make a special appointment for you, and you, and you, and you. Even on the weekends, these guys are committed to saving lives. So, just, just hear my voice, hear that when you're laying there thinking, dang, I'm gonna shut her mouth up. I'm just gonna go ahead and fill out that application. I will be checking. But it's really, really sad when you see that, see that house. $30,000 of damage to the structure, and I forgot how much to the contents, but it just, it just hurts my heart.
Thank you. Councilwoman Anderson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last night, I attended an NIA meeting in my district and had Richard Siegel there from the Fire Department. And he brought, he did a hands-only CPR demonstration, and it's, it's really neat, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping the chief is gonna roll this out further, but it's, it's really neat. This basically teaches you what it takes to do CPR, the amount of compression. So, it's a, it's a great thing. You no longer have to do the breaths if that's keeping you from performing CPR. So, I wanted to thank him. I also want to thank William Bracken. He's an officer that is now in four of my NIA's or NIAs, and he just does a fantastic job for us. And I, I'm loath to praise him too much, or he'll get promoted out of that.[767.13][767.13](LAUGHING). But he's, he just does a fantastic job for us. So, I want to, I would thank Officer Bracken for all of his efforts. Thank you.
Councilman Padilla. No comments. Being no comments, the next step would be public comment. However, we will take a five-minute recess before the public comment section, and then we will return back to the public comments. So, it is 8:53, and we should be back by 8:58.[794.69][794.69](Clerk叩头)
We are now going to start the public comment portion of the evening. The first person signed up to speak is Roosevelt Boyd.
To the mayor, manager, city council. I know that Mrs. Heller was telling us how Topeka's having a lot of great things happening, and I've been here 66 years, and I'm very proud of the things that have happened here at Topeka also. But my concern is that Topeka has a problem that has been around for a while. And before I get into what I experienced last week, this problem, he seems to went from, I'm sure you know who I'm talking about, the lamp dancer. He's went from one leg hopping to carrying the flag and the lamp to something a little bit more disturbing, which is what I witnessed Friday, last Friday on the 2nd of March around 4 o'clock at the restaurant, me and my wife. And I was baffled by the fact that I was troubled so much I called the police dispatch. From the time I was there for about 30 minutes, dispatch never showed up. But when I left at 10th and Wanamaker, where the restaurant was, I went east to 10th and Fairline, and I did see an officer there in the parking lot with a church. And I asked him, I said, "There's something disturbing about the situation. It seems like this person is more aggressive. He seems angry. It may be because of assault that he might have had in 2017. I'm not sure." But the officer said, "Well, I know who you're talking about, and I keep getting all these calls, but there's nothing I can do. There's no ordinance in place." And pretty much, he said, you know, basically that was it. And I said, "Well, you know, maybe there should be an ordinance. Maybe there's something." He said, "Well, you're a voice. You know, you just speak how you feel." And so that's part of the reason why I'm here, is because, you know, it's Topeka's problem. And, you know, it reminded of my child four years ago, my grandchild. We were downtown, and she saw that, and she said, "Papa, do something." I said, "What can I do?" So I called dispatch, and dispatch says, "Excuse me, does that turn you on?" I said, "No, excuse me, no." And so she said, "Well, just look the other way." And so I told my granddaughter, I said, "Just look the other way." And that was four years ago. And she said, "Well, Papa, I don't understand." I said, "Well, there's some things you will not understand about life. You have to accept some things in life." And then, like I said, when the 2nd of March last Friday, I witnessed him, I saw his bicycle at the meeting at 10th and Wanamaker in the corner, and as we sat down to eat. And then he went from the median intersection, where his bicycle was laying on the ground, to the other side of the street. And then he would walk toward the sidewalk, where the cars were giving that exit, and he would point, do his little funny thing. And then the cars would stop, and they weren't sure if he was trying to go through the car spark or what. But then he would clap his hands, wave, and point. Then he would come back to the median, go back to the intersection where his bicycle was. And I was trying to understand, why is his bicycle landing with its curve sticking off the median where a car could have hit it? Cars navigated around the bicycle. And so then I realized why. He took the pole, and he attempted to do his lewd act, and then he would turn around with his buttocks and do the same thing. And I was just baffled to think that, you know, he must be angry, because he's never done anything that egregious. And I'm just asking and hoping that the city council will consider maybe ordinance, because it obviously needs help. I was able to look up some information on him, and we know that his history is pretty bad. But he don't even get worse, far as I'm concerned, because the officer said, "Well, he's normally not out this far." Well, he's getting emboldened now. He thinks that he's almost unstoppable, and he feels like he can do whatever he wants. And as a voice, I'm just one of the people that feel like, all the people that have called that would like to know.
Well, thank you for your comments. You had four minutes, but...
I'm sorry.
No, 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 no worries, sir. We appreciate your comments, and we, I would encourage you to speak with chief to, you know, get some information. He is here as you're on your way.
Sure.
And we appreciate you letting us know so that we can continue having further discussion.
Yes, sorry I had to break that information out, but it was just, it's been troubling me for a long time, and I just had to speak on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
The next person signed up to speak is Sam Riley.
Good afternoon. What I'm here to speak about is something I've been having a problem with for the past couple of years, and I need to see if there's any way to get a provision or get something set in stone about it. I've got a recreational dirt track race car that doesn't have mufflers on it, and every time I fire it up, one of my neighbors keeps calling the cops about it. I don't fire it up after 10 o'clock. I fire it up in between the hours of 8 and 10. The only time that car ever sees the street is if it's on the trailer to go to the racetrack. I work on it at my house, because I don't have a garage. So I work on it at my house, do all the maintenance work on it and everything like that at my house, because I can't afford to pay a mechanic or anything like that. Is there any way to get a provision put in with the noise ordinance to where we can work on recreational vehicles?
I would have to, at this point in time, sir, the public comment, I am so sorry, the public comment is a time for you to express any needs or concerns that you have with regards to the city council. However, if what you're looking for is for communication with staff, we're more than happy to get you connected with the city manager so that he and you can discuss your needs, and he could directly have them address. City council, city manager, would you mind then providing your information to the gentleman?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person signed up to speak is Myron Holter. Okay, it seems that Myron Holter is not present. Next person signed up to speak is Sarah Oldusfeed, Doug Donegan. Reverend Sarah.
Good evening, mayor and council. It's good to be with you again. A few weeks ago, I passed out copies of a book that I believe is very important to our ongoing discussions about policing and your role as a body that sets policies for the city, including the police department. The authors use the research in this book, the one called Pulled Over, that I shared with you from KU professor Chuck Epp. It shows the underlying differences between routine traffic stops and investigatory stops, which are very problematic for our communities. They say that police stops matter. No form of direct government control comes close to those stops in sheer number, frequency, proportion of the population affected, and in many instances, the degree of coercive intrusion, they say. In addition, the authors say that police stops convey powerful messages about citizenship and equality. Across millions of stops, these experiences are translated into common stories about who is an equal member of a rule-governed society and who is subjected to arbitrary surveillance and inquiry. Recently, in speaking with a member of RTPD at a meeting with clergy, I said that pretty much every person of color that I know has had at least one negative experience with police, and he contested that. However, the research in this book supports my statement, because it reveals that people of color are stopped in investigatory stops at much higher rates than white people, and that these stops are experienced as unfair stops that seldom yield actual arrests or information of criminal behavior. Racial minorities are questioned, handcuffed, and searched at dramatically higher rates than whites are. Research also reveals that police officers disproportionately stop racial minorities and act more intrusively toward them during the stop. Citizens are treated like second-class citizens in an investigatory stop where the person is being stopped for no clear reason, being asked things like, "Where are you going?", and being searched. Data reveals what every black man knows: most white people have never experienced these kinds of stops. Fair procedures are valuable not only because they minimize mistakes, but they affirm the inherent dignity of the individual. The purpose is to treat people as people, not as things. The authors say that what makes investigatory stops so offensive to many African-American Latinos is that these stops are common, repeated, routine, and even scripted. This scripted practice treats its targets not as individuals worthy of dignity, but as numbers to be processed in search of small percentage who are carrying contraband or have an outstanding warrant. Each time that I've spoken to members of TPD here, I hear a lot of defensive information about what a great job they do. I don't hear anyone taking seriously the concerns that many of us have about the different experiences of policing that members of our community have based on race and place. Your leadership is needed to move us into more than a cursory discussion of current practices. What most people of color saw when they saw the video of Dominique White's death was something they know oh too well and fear, an investigatory stop gone wrong, a person being treated like a thing, an assumption of someone's dangerous nature based not on any actual evidence at the time, but simply based on race and place. And I ask you to read this book that I've shared with each of you, there's many copies that were passed out earlier, and set up a special council session to look more deeply at police practices like the investigatory stop. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Mary Akerstrom.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members, and I applaud that you completed the fireworks ordinance work. That's, oh, that just went on too long for me personally.
Thank you.
Tonight, I'd like to say that, as I've mentioned before, our community has lost a lot of trust. As Mr. Rogers said, listening is where love begins. I would like to see our city leaders create a listening tour where law enforcement officers actually listen. The residents of our city need a space to share their stories of police violence without feeling intimidated by officers in full gear. For example, a few years ago, I met a young black man who had been assaulted by a police officer during a regular traffic stop. The officer did not use his weapon, and therefore, no use of force had been documented. And it's kind of hard to ask an officer for their name and badge number while you're being attacked. This young man had visible injuries to his face and body, and without any kind of documentation or body cam footage, he really had no recourse through official channels. The council has the power to direct our police officers' professional behavior and development. It's, it kind of feels like we get the runaround once in a while when we say, "Oh, well, such and such has to happen at a state legislature level." And then we go, we, the people, go to the state legislature, and they say, "No, your city can do that through an ordinance." It's very frustrating for us, and it feels like everyone's just passing the buck. We feel that our capital city needs to address many issues, and we really don't have time to wait for the state to take care of the problem, whether it's higher wages, whether it's looking closer at police behavior and training, whether it's things like providing transportation, which our city is doing a great job of with Topeka Public Schools. Every issue that our community faces goes right back to income inequality, and it's getting to a point where we don't have any more time to wait. So I would urge you this year, 2018, to really dig into some of the hard issues that are facing our city, including police violence. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Ms. O'Shaughnessy.
Good evening. Sorry for walking so slow, but today's my first day out without a cane, and I'm so happy. Good evening to the city council and to the mayor. I'm coming to you today because you are the governing body of our city where we want to feel safe and live and work. You have the power to make changes to policy and procedure, and we, the concerned citizens, trust you, you will listen and take action to concerns that are presented to you. I appreciate how I was in a setting and the words that the chief of police offered on a panel. He said that his agency needs to hear from citizens to know what the community needs. We need to be in a relationship and have dialogue about community concerns and know how to go forward as a community. I didn't, I didn't quote the chief word for word, but this is the essence of what he said in a public forum, and I appreciate deeply his transparency and willingness to be open to what the community has to say. We have a lot to say about open discussions and crime issues. Any discussion about crime in Topeka must include police-involved violence, and those discussions should include Topeka Police Department, the city, and the citizens of the community. Since you have the power to make this a reality, I'm asking that you create a space to make this happen in our town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. At this point in time, all the public comments have been made. We have the need to go into executive session. If the city attorney would please read the parameters.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of 15 minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privileged matters related to workers' compensation as justified by KSA 75-4319B2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: members of the governing body, city manager Brent Trout, deputy city manager Doug Gerber, financial administrative services director Nikki Lee, human resources director Jackie Russell, risk manager Shannon Langston, and myself.
Is there a motion?
Absolutely.
Motion made by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Cohen. If you will proceed to the vote to go into executive session, not to exceed 15 minutes.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the motion passes. We will recess into executive session as soon as the room is cleared.
I was about to do that, because I had not used...
We have completed our executive sessions. No action has been taken. At this time, we adjourn the meeting.